Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for December 16th, 2020. My name is Carrie Martinak. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. I just need to read a quick note before we get started tonight. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, the town of Northborough has been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This order allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to the Northborough Remote Meetings or YouTube via the link listed on the agenda, by tuning into cable access television government channels, Verizon Channel 30, or Charter Channel 192, or by visiting the town's website and going to the Department of Cable Access Television and click "What's Playing Live"? If you're on a phone, please dial *9 to raise your hand. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. I'd like to confirm that board members and persons anticipated on the agenda are remotely present and can be heard by stating the following, I'm sorry, heard by stating the following. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Amy Peretzky?
Yeah.
Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
Millie Milton?
Here.
And Michelle Gillespie?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative.
Here.
Robert Federico?
You.
And Kathy Juvert?
Here.
Okay. Just for ground rules, actually, we don't have any hearings this evening, so I don't think I need to cover the ground rules for having speakers come in and out. So I think that, does it, if technical, this may be relevant this evening with the pending snow. If technical difficulties arise, the Chair will suspend the meeting while attempts to resolve are made. Any disconnections and reconnections of board members should be accurately reflected in the meeting minutes. Okay, great. With that, why don't we get started? Let's see. We have first on our agenda, the consideration of minutes. So what I'd like to do is, we have the October 20th, November 4th, and 17th, and December 1st. And when we last met, we talked about what we thought for the format of our minutes. We had gone back and forth between longer, shorter, you know, we were, our task was to provide Melanie a good direction in terms of length. So just before we even go down the road of minutes, I just wanted to get a sense from board members, any feedback on that in terms of the last bash that we just received? Amy?
Oh, um, well, I think for 11:04, 11:17, and 12:01, they were summarized, so I think, you know, it works. But just for me, I know with 10:20, it was a hearing. So sometimes with a hearing, there may be sentences that are my own that I'd like to add because I felt it was an important part that I said in the meeting. Nothing against Melanie or in the minutes. It's just that, I think, with the public meetings where it's not a decision for an application that we've talked about all year, then I think the summary is fine. I just don't want her to get offended if, say it's a meeting like with the Bartlett meeting or another really big application, if I want to add some sentences here and there. I mean, so I guess I'm in the middle. I like the summary, but then if it's a really big decision meeting, I'd like to be able to have the chance to add, you know, a couple of sentences here and there that I, or even might even be a paragraph, but that I think are missing.
Okay. On the minutes?
Sorry? I think I agree with that.
Yep. Anthony, do you have something?
No, I just, I think that's, I mean, I think depending on the meeting and, you know, whether it's a decision or public hearing, and it's, you know, I think we, I think you can craft them differently depending on what the content of the meeting is what I would suggest.
Yeah. Michelle, did you have any thoughts on the minutes for direction? Michelle, there you go.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Great.
Sorry, were you trying to add something?
No, I prefer the summarization, but if somebody wants to make a point, you know, that is a statement on their own behalf, I think that's okay.
Yep. Um, I too, for the November and December, I actually really appreciated the shorter versions. It's, it is a lot to read, and I thought that it was just the right amount for those last three. I don't think we had any hearings going on, so it was just the right amount, and the summaries were good. I think it captured the essence of what we were talking about and put, you know, had both, both sides going back and forth. I thought they were great. And I would agree that for when we have a hearing, and especially when we're deliberating, I do like the more detailed version just because I know, I like to go back and reference them quite a bit several times when it's a big one like that. So if it's not too confusing, Melanie, maybe in the instance where we have a hearing, specifically when we're deliberating, you know, maybe a little more detail. But otherwise, it sounds like the board unanimously liked the summaries from November and December. Staff, did you have any comments on that? I know you're also...
Yep, no, that, that works, Carrie. I mean, I think that's, that's, you know, informative and easy to follow. So we'll just, you know, when there's public hearings, we'll include more detail and, and like you said, especially when there's, you know, when the deliberation is happening.
So with that said, I did have a lot of edits for the October meeting minutes. So what I, what I wanted to do, because they're actually in the, in the line with the agenda item for Zero Bartlett, I wanted to hold on the 10, 20 minutes and just at least get through November and December if everybody's prepared to get through those tonight and then swing back around to October, if that's okay. Did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes from 11:04?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Were there any amendments for the minutes from November 4?
I actually did not have any.
No. No, I didn't either. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the November 4th minutes as presented? Or as submitted, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to approve the November 4th minutes as submitted?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second. And I will take a roll call vote to approve the minutes from November 4th. Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. The minutes from November 4th have passed. Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes from 11:17, November 17?
Yes.
Yep. Were there any edits to the minutes?
Not for me.
I had two very small ones, just really small.
Do you want to cover them?
For context, um, yeah, I just have to open them. Let's see, because I wrote it down on a piece of paper. Sorry. I just have to, okay, here it is. All right, November 17th, it was on page two. And it was when we were talking about the zoning bylaw amendments, and it was under my discussion about zoning bylaw amendments. And it's really just one word, the third line down where it says, "Why", at the very end says, "Ms. Juvert said it was part of the 2009 rewrite, not a carryover", and explain the reason why it was personally, it was purposely put there. And it wasn't really the reason why, it just, she explained that it was purposely put there because I did go back and try to listen to the reason why. And so it's just that one word that, um, that, that it was out of context a little.
So you're saying remove the word "why"?
Yeah. Because the explanation was about that it was personally purposely put there, and then, you know, she asked Michelle if she remembered that it was purposely put there, but it wasn't really why it was put there, just that it was put there.
Okay, did you have another one?
Yeah, my other one is down when it talks about Ace Hardware. And this again is just because it's out of context a little. It says, "Mr. Federico said Ace Hardware is permitted to store and show items outside", and he wrote, he said "by variance or special permit". It wasn't because it was a contractor's yard, so I just wanted to add the "by variance or special permit", or else when you read it, it makes it seem like Ace Hardware is a contractor's yard, which he was explaining when Michelle asked if Ace Hardware was a contractor's yard. He said he remembered outside storage was by special permit or variance. And I went back and listened to it just to double check.
Okay, Bob, does that sound right to you? Does that make sense to you?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Okay.
Those are my only two changes.
Okay. Any other members have suggested amendments?
Not for me. It was good.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the November 17th minutes as amended?
I make a motion to accept the November 17th minutes as amended?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded. A, all in favor. Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. So we have the November 17th minutes pass. Next, we have December 1st. Did everyone have a chance to read December 1st?
Yes.
Okay, any edits for December 1st?
Not for me.
Not for me.
I just had a quick one too, sorry. I'm not changing a lot, it just changes the contents, context of the sentence.
Okay, what do you have?
Down, December 1st, and I scroll, so I don't even know what page it's on. But it's when I'm talking about contractors' yard again. It would probably be down the second or third page. It doesn't tell me what page, because the first couple I had printed out, this one isn't printed out. So there's a paragraph that says she wanted to update the definition of a contractor's yard. And 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, it says, "Ms. Peretzky said it could be added", and then I just want to add to that sentence, we could talk about it as a board, they aren't even in the definition now. Because I didn't, my point wasn't that I wanted to take them out, I just wanted to talk about it. And I felt the paragraph was out of context, making it sound like my purpose was to take them out of the definition. But I went back and listened, and it said that Ms. Peretzky said it could be added, we could talk about it as a board, they aren't even in the definition now.
Okay, so what, you're proposing the addition of that sentence?
Yeah, the, well, the, it's, it goes, it's after the added. So I'm adding, we could talk about it as a board, they aren't even in the definition now, so that's what I was adding.
Okay.
Carrie, I don't, or Amy, I don't know where you are.
Okay. I know, because, I mean, I can share my screen. Let me see if I can open those minutes.
Well, can, can you just say maybe like what the beginning of the paragraph says?
Yes. It's the one about, the beginning of the paragraph said she wanted to update the definition of a contractor's yard.
Okay, so that's in the middle of page four, if anyone else is looking. And then what did, where were you, what did you want to change?
3, 4, 5, 6, I'm down like six lines, at least on mine. See, I tried to cut and paste. But down on six lines, it said Ms. Peretzky said it could be added.
Okay, yeah.
And then after that, I have a comma, "we could talk about it as a board", comma, "they aren't even in the definition now", period. Just to put it in context of what we're talking about.
So we could talk, maybe Melanie's already got this, but I just want to have this as backup because we don't, I don't go back and listen to the tapes. We could talk about it as a board?
Comma.
Yeah.
They aren't even in the definition now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Anything else from anyone? Okay, so is there a motion to accept the minutes as amended for December 1st?
I make a motion to accept the December 1st minutes as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Right, all in favor, Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, so why don't we move down to the review of Zero Bartlett Street Special Permit and Site Plan Decision? For that, I think everybody received a cop and edited version, and I know it was a lot to read. So what I wanted to do, just to start, was at least talk a little bit about why I put in some of the changes that I changed, that I made, and then figure out, you know, what, how we want to go forward with editing, what we want to edit, you know, just take it from there. So what I'm going to do, I'm going to pull up, and Amy, I know you had edits as well, I don't, I don't want to speak to yours. I'll let you speak to your own edits, I'm just going to walk through why I changed what I changed.
Sure.
Call that up. Okay, give me a second here, I have a lot of files going on. Okay, whoops.
Hello?
Okay, I think this is it. Okay, does everybody see the file name that has December 15th at the top here?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so my edits are in a few different, primarily in a few different areas. The first part is, I think, pretty self-explanatory. I just happen to keep folders of all different emails and letters, and I added the ones that weren't already here. So I just went back and literally pulled whatever I, I noticed was in one place but not the other. So that's why that looks like a lot right there. So basically, I followed the same format, whether it was a letter or an email, the date, who it's from, and what was the subject line, unless it had an attachment, I included that as well. In some cases, there were, there was, people submitted materials that they either talked through or put an explanation with, so I added them as materials and just described them as they were described by the person who sent them. Just to give some, a little bit of context of what was being submitted here. And also, I'd noticed there was actually one email that was in support of the application, so I just added that section here with that email using the same format. Then, the other part of primary editing, let's see, in the hearing section, well, actually, I'll come back to the hearings because I want to go down to my primary areas. Then what I did was, I took, I'm going to share something else for a second. Let's see. So I went back to one of the classes on writing defensible decisions. I think, as we talked about last time, this is something that is a decision that's likely to be appealed. So I had taken this class before, but I just wanted to refresh my memory a little bit. So I took it again and then just went through the materials, and there were a couple of sections that I noticed that I, I could share it in my link to Kathy, but I just wanted to point out to the board here. So you had some context of why I added so much. One spot that they recommended is just really going through the applicable law and decision criteria to include that in your decision. So that lent to that giant section on applicable law and decision criteria. And then there was also, in addition to, so I guess, just to go back here, under the findings of fact, you know, we listed all our general findings, and then we had a couple of specific findings. But what I, what really stood out to me in this particular class and documentation is the inclusion of specific findings, and the piece that really stood out was just showing how we came to our conclusions, really about the board, not about applicants or anyone who testified at the public hearing, or residents, or any consultants, anyone. Just the board, seeing how our thought process worked. And I wanted to make sure that was represented, especially in a decision that, that could stand to be appealed. I tried to make it clear, you know, why we came to the decision we did. So with that, I'm going to go back to the decision. Does anyone have any questions or thoughts on this? I just wanted to provide it as a background. Let's see. I'm going to go back to the decision. Okay, so then going back to where we were before, that's what you're seeing here. The applicable, applicable law and decision criteria is added in here. And then, in addition to the general findings, which are still listed up top above here, I have specific findings. So this was really going back, listening to our deliberation, you know, really pulling together, what if some, what, how did our thought process, I looked at it through the lens of how did our thought process work? What were the things we were talking about that stood out to us? What led us to these decisions? So that was the lens that I used in making the edits here. And then, obviously, because I had to go back and listen to the hearings in order, well, this part, the specific findings is all from the 20th, through deliberation.
Okay.
But then I went back, you know, and went through the minutes and the hearings themselves, and I just wanted to make sure that some of the key pieces that we did, that were a part of our thought process, were just reflected throughout a couple of the hearings. So in some cases, there was a lot about what the applicant had presented, but didn't really cover what kind of questions we were asking. So again, I just wanted to sort of show the thought process, you know, watching us go through this to just, you know, make it clear that we really thought about it and put real consideration into some serious questions. The one thing that I, that I did catch was, there was, there was something here about Mr. Lopez going through all the permits, and when I watched this hearing, he didn't go through all the permits, so I didn't know if that was just, we wanted to reflect them in the decision. So I just put a note that we do have them reflected in the decision, other spots. I don't know if this was mistakenly put in this hearing, but it was, it was Dave Robinson who brought up the memos, but didn't really go into any depth with the memos. So that was just one I highlighted as kind of a question. Like, for example, the fire chief memo came August 26th, and this was the July 21st hearing. So it was either in the wrong place or something happened with that. So I just highlighted it. I don't know if there are any initial thoughts or comments, or if Amy, you want to talk to some of your edits? Any initial thoughts or comments?
I thought it was really good, because I was going through it too, and I actually was using Dave Dineski's Word document, and I was writing comments on, on things that I had found. But then when yours came out, I took yours and just added, I took it out of the Dave memo and added to yours because it made it less confusing for me. Because after reading yours, like, I noticed that the special permit criteria was missing for the groundwater, and I was trying to write it, but after reading yours, I'm like, oh, that sounds way better than what I was trying to phrase, so I just went with yours. So I just took out, that's what I did, is I took, I had made it, I had made edits too, so I just took mine and, and added it to your men, added it to your decision.
Did you want to talk about your edits specifically? Do you want to, I mean, so I guess we can do this a couple of different ways. I realize this is a lot, and I don't want board members to feel, if, if, the board would like to, you know, take time to read through this, now, you know, having that context and look through it and think about it, or, and the other reason I wanted to hold those minutes and speak to them is because I made a few similar edits to the October 20th minutes. I wasn't, I wanted that, I wanted our deliberation to be reflected in the July, I'm sorry, the October 20th minutes. Like we were talking about before when we were speaking about the length of the minutes, because I don't know to what extent minutes would be referenced, but I didn't want it to be boiled down to a paragraph when we have so much on the line. So likewise, I have a lot of edits on the minutes, so I wasn't sure if board members want time to digest, take and digest them both, or, you know, I don't think it's a good use of time to go paragraph by paragraph because there's so much. So I'd like to hear from the board, you know, what makes sense to everybody that you want to do.
So I read through the, the version that combined yours and Amy's and Kathy's all together. And for the most, I mean, I liked it, I think it was well done, and I honestly didn't see anywhere where I'd make any changes. I know there was one spot, I think on page 13, where Amy had written a paragraph and said, well, maybe, you know, it was something so close to what, what Carrie had written, you know, to decide which language you want to choose. And then I found just like a couple very minor, maybe typos, but I'm fine with it unless anybody, I imagine not everybody got through it, so I'm good with the way it is.
Amy, do you want to talk about some of your edits? We didn't really get to look at them. I don't know.
Do you want me to pull it out?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, let's see. To find it. Okay, do you see that, or is it small, or is it taking up the whole screen?
There you go.
Oops. Do you, do you see it?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's kind of weird, you're, there you go.
Can you see it now? It's weird because I don't know what you're seeing. My question, you know, I have a couple for Kathy. At the very top, there's the decision. And then on the first sentence, I was assuming, should we add all three special permits there, like the planning board, and then add the groundwater special permit, and then the special permit to extend onto groundwater one, and then the special permit site plan approval? I was, I was just assuming that we have to, it's kind of, is that like the title?
Is that for me?
Yeah.
The, the, if you looked at every other decision that, you know, whether it's the planning board or the ZBA, they're all written where it just is special permit with site plan approval, because that's what, that's what the decision is. And then when you go into the decision, it starts to explain what special permits are being granted, you know, site plan being granted. So in your heading, and I noticed this someplace else in your edits, Amy, they, they, they did not, nor, nor did you, I don't think you voted on it, but they're, they withdrew the part about moving into groundwater area one. So that's not part of your decision.
And we definitely voted on it. I don't think they ever officially withdrew it. They just said if we accepted the new driveway configuration, that we wouldn't need it, but this fire chief hadn't even approved it yet. So we definitely didn't vote to withdraw it, and we voted on all three permits. So I wanted to include them all because that's the way the vote went down. And, and I just, I changed the title only because I did go back to the Bartlett Street ones, and some of them said special permit with earthworks permit, and some of them mentioned groundwater. They were all different, but I just thought it wouldn't hurt to have all three there because that's what we voted on. And my second line for parcel three there, it's a very minor detail, and it probably doesn't even matter. But in some letters and some maps, it says parcel 3A, and others it said parcel 3. So I didn't know if that's even a big deal, if like Dave Dineski had to check it out and see which one is it really, or maybe it's both and it changed over the years. Or maybe it's both and it changed over the years.
No, it's parcel, it's parcel three. That's how it appears in our assessors' records.
Oh, okay. Some of our paperwork said three A.
No, it absolutely does. But the, but the assessors' records are parcel three.
Okay, so some of mine were just little things. So then um, I changed, it said commercial and industrial, so I just changed it to industrial. And then I added the groundwater one special permit.
That, that particular section, Amy, that you changed, that's how the bylaw reads, so that's why it's written that way?
I checked. There, the D three, C four. There was one of them that is for commercial industrial, and the other one is for industrial on sixty thousand square feet. And, and I think I can open it right now. Seven dash oh seven oh one oh D D three, C four. C four. Says industrial development on lots of at least sixty thousand square feet. But C three says the commercial development. So the floor was industrial. So that was the only reason why I changed that.
Yeah, there was a town council edit, so I mean, if you want to do something different than what town council advised, that's, that's up completely up to you as a board.
Okay, and then, um, I changed right here where I talked about the, and I guess Carrie had seen it too. Instead of went from January till June, and I just updated it where it went from January, continued to February, continued to March. And then it went to June. So that's just, a lot of mine are just little details. And maybe, um, people can go through them.
Could you just go back up for a second?
Sure, I did not go through all the letters.
Um, wait, stop right there. Alright, so we opened the hea- but we opened the hearing on January twenty-first. We continued it, but we opened it.
I don't think we opened it till June ninth. I don't know, I can go back and look.
I think we
You, you opened it in January.
Yeah, we opened it in January, continued to February.
Right, and then COVID hit, and then just as a precaution, it wasn't required by um, the governor's um, um, emergency action, but just as a precautionary, um, I re-advertised all hearings for both boards um, to start it the next time that you would be meeting. So that's why there's the interruption there.
Yep.
Okay. Do you want me to change the sentence to say we opened the meeting January twenty-first?
Yeah, because it sounds like you're saying
Or we can just talk about it next time, if people want to read it over and then come back with comments.
Okay.
And then I did not go through all the letters.
Can I just ask you a question for a minute? Because there's so much here.
Yep.
Um, and I don't know who did what, because the colors, I mean, it looks like, oh my god.
Oh, I'm red. And on, and on my computer, Carrie's are green.
So when I printed it out, I'm looking at page eight, where just talks about Mr. Lopez reviewed the process to the date, which included, you took that out, and then you put this whole paragraph in highlighted red. Is that yours, or Carrie's, or who is that?
Well, that was me. That was what I was saying before, where at that particular hearing, well, I, I don't even remember where I'm ever going, going through that, but he did not go through that. And then it was weird because there was a fire chief letter from August that said he went through in July, so that didn't really, that didn't make sense. So I just said if we needed to reflect it somewhere, you know, we can make sure it's in, there, there are places where it's listed in the findings and somewhere else, I think, um, submitted documents, uh, um, exhibits. So that was fine if we want to represent it. I just didn't, I just thought it was in the wrong spot hearing wise, or the wrong description.
Okay, so I guess when we have situations like this, that there are significant amounts taken out, we should probably go back to Kathy and ask Kathy where she would suggest to put it in, or
Yeah.
I, I, I'm just trying to figure out how you want us to comment on all these changes. Do I?
Well, what I did is, um, I went back and I listened to the hearing.
So yeah, so that's not Amy's change, Michelle, that was mine. And I do have, I do want to make sure that we figure out where those things go. But I, I removed it from there because it, it didn't happen there. So it's a good point.
Aren't those all listed under exhibits?
I thought they were.
Yeah, they're all here. Let me go down further. I think they are listed somewhere else. They're either finding of facts or exhibits. I probably already passed exhibits.
So I guess, I, I can see here who, how Amy's is here and how Carrie's is here, and then I don't think Anthony Gayfe Boyak, um, just agreed with you guys. I guess what my question is, is what are you expecting staff to do to take these changes and then make the um, alterations and then get back to us at the next meeting?
Well, personally, I'm looking for feedback in terms of what we want to do for the next step, you know, do we are we, do we feel like this is on the right track? Do we want to take it back and read through it? Because it is a lot, for sure. It's a lot to get through. Um, other, other edits, Millie, we haven't heard from you, if you have anything. Anthony, I don't know if you have anything additional, or Michelle, if you have something additional. So maybe if we just put out on the table what, what we had changed, um, I don't, you know, and if board members want to read through it again, and, you know, take some time, that's okay too.
Carrie, if I, if I can just answer, actually, I forgot who asked the, the question, but um, if you're looking on page eight and nine, the um, actually eight, nine and ten, at least how that, how it printed out for me, but that list that came from um, Gutierrez, that was in response to a question that the planning board asked, um, as far as what other permits were were needed for the project, or something to that effect, the, or the, 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 or the applicant stated that this was the last stop in their permitting process, something to that effect. And then, um, someone asked the applicant to put together a list of all the permits they've received. So that's where that list came from. And there's a, you know, there's an actual document in the file. And, and those, it, most of those individual things listed are not in the exhibits because they, we don't have them. You know, they weren't, they weren't part of their application process. Um, but it, it's in a memo that Gutierrez provided to the board. So, so they couldn't be listed as exhibits because I don't physically have them.
Okay, so do we just need to find a home for them? So I think what actually happened at the hearing was um, Dave Robinson said, you know, the board requested a lighting memo and a summary of permits. And we've submitted that. But there was no, like, here's, you know, here's this one, and here's that one. And this list actually had four more bullets that were listed than were on the memo itself. So I don't know if this was that's what confused me about it here, because it didn't, that's not how it happened. And there was, there were four extra ones on this list, and more on the memo. So I just wanted to figure out where their home is. Maybe if it's not exhibits, I thought they were covered elsewhere, but we can double check that too.
Yeah, I, I can go through um, the, the minutes and, and my notes um, on when they were, or at least what meeting it was presented at, and, you know, when it was referenced and just you know, if it doesn't belong where I had originally put it, you know, I'll, I'll find a spot for it.
Well, it must have been, yeah, so that's a good point. It must have been at least later than August twenty-sixth, because that's listed in, that's on that list. So it had to have been after August twenty-sixth. So that'll narrow it down.
And if we didn't get the letters, like say they're conservation, and you're saying we don't even have the letters in our files. I mean, if there's something we don't even have, should it be part of our decision?
Well, they, they gave, you asked for it, and they gave it to you.
The list or the memos?
The list.
Oh, okay, so then you could list that we got a memo with the list.
You requested a summary from the applicant, and they provided you a summary. And you did discuss some of these. You talked about the A D M permit, you talked about conservation commission. Um, I can't remember, you talked about fire chief, uh, letters, obviously. The um, some of the residents referred to some of these, the, some of this information, so um, I mean, it's not, it's, I don't, I don't think it harms you in any way. It's just, it's just a a summary that you requested of, you know, what, what other boards and departments they had been to.
Does it have to be, since we, if we requested a memo, like right here in the sentence, it says they submitted the memo. And we requested the memo, and you said it doesn't hurt or help. I mean, just because the decision's so long as it is, do you have to list them all out?
That, you, you all can make that decision.
Okay.
That's, I mean, the, these all pertain to the project. I, I don't understand the, the issue with it, but that's, that's up to you.
If we didn't get a copy of it, it doesn't. But we can go back and look, because I think a lot of those were in other places.
Okay, so that's a, that's a question. We had a question on the uh, commercial industrial. Did you want to go through anything else on yours?
Mine is just basic, because I just went down and added a couple of things to yours, and for anyone who is reading them, mine were in red.
Well, it depends, it might depend on their side. I, I don't know if it's consistently, like on mine, mine is blue and red versus
Right, that's how, if you, um, using the printers in-house, um, that's how it comes out, is Carrie's is in red. Um, and then there's some um, that Carrie highlighted, so it's red and yellow, and then Amy's is in blue.
It might be Carrie in blue, do you think?
No, it's you in blue.
Well, it depends on your, your side. It matters, your preferences are the ones that are applied. So color is irrelevant.
Okay.
But that's okay.
I guess right here, I had a question too, I'm on the September fifteenth. And it said the hearing was continued to September fifteenth. When I, I was going through the minutes and through the meetings, I was listening to the hearings. The hearing was actually continued to September first, but it was the election, so then we continued it again to the fifteenth. Does that matter in the decision, Kathy? Or can you just leave it as it went to the fifteenth?
It, it's fine, the way that it's written to the fifteenth. You didn't have a meeting on the first.
Yeah. I just didn't know, because when I was following along, I was going minute by minute, and it said the hearing was continued to the first. So then I went to the first and said, oh, we didn't have one, and it got continued to the fifteenth. But if we don't need, I didn't know how specific had to be, if that doesn't matter. Then we can take that out. And then, yeah, I guess if people go back and read it, like, I liked, I just, because it was so, um, it was tricky for me. So I, I just wrote what I had on my memo, but Carrie has some stuff above. So maybe I, I even want to read both of them and see if there's, maybe just add like a couple of words of mine into Carrie's, or if somebody else has something to add. But I know in this paragraph here, I think it's not that I want to add this whole paragraph, it's just that, that was my paragraph, and I just threw it on. So we had everything in one place. And then I thought maybe we'd talk about, you know, I think people would have, need time to read what we wrote. So just to explain it, there are a couple of places where it seems duplicate. It's just because I didn't want to work it into Carrie's sentences, so I just kind of plod mine in. Sorry. And then I added a couple of general findings. And then everybody can read those if they want. And and then this, I'm not adding this paragraph about Cedar Hill, but I was just questioning it, because I know when we did Cedar Hill, I asked Kathy if we should add conservation information or groundwater. And um, she said no, because the conservation has their own decision. So that was something I just flagged, because I want to ask, because we did have a lot of conservation stuff on here. And I know we did talk about environmental things. So I didn't know if we should leave them on, or we take them off just to to be consistent with our other decisions. Where we didn't add in all the conservation stuff, or even the conservation commission unanimously voted to approve it. They have their own decision, we have our own decision, so does it matter if it's there or not? That was my question there, because I remember we talked about it just recently, about how we have two separate decisions, and I'm sure if conservation talked probably about our lighting and stuff, but they probably didn't include that in their decision, so I didn't know if it just made it more tricky by combining the conservation stuff in with the planning board stuff. So that was my question for the other board members and Kathy, that maybe we want to think about that. And then, yeah.
So, so we're just, go ahead.
I think, I just had a question, um, on page eight. So now that I understand the color coordination here, Amy, if Amy's in blue, which to me printed out like a, a light blue, so I'm assuming this is yours, Amy. Um, and I'm trying to figure out if all your edits, so that when I give feedback, I know.
For sure.
And this is only pertaining to design review, because I was on that committee.
Yeah.
That Kathy Jubert, town planner, reviewed the design committee process and reported the committee recommends approval of the proposal as all comments and justice made during the design review committee process. Did you cross that out, or was that Carrie across it out? Just curious.
Only because I was listening to the meeting, and Kathy said during the hearing that day that she didn't have a letter from design review. But that, the, that the design review answered all comments and suggestions and had been addressed by the applicant. Like, if you listen to the hearing for this date, which is June ninth, when you go down to the, what Kathy said about design review, she said that um, all comments and suggestions made during the design review process have been addressed by the applicant and incorporated into the site plans. Like, during the June ninth hearing, she didn't say the committee recommends approval of the proposal. Like, I actually, for all these sections, I went back and re-listened to the hearings.
You understand, like, in the process, like, before an applicant comes before you, they come, they pass through their meetings and design review, and then they move on to the next board who's permitting them. And in your ca- in this case, it was a planning board. So we had just, we had already approved the proposals they put towards us. So I'm just, I just want to make a note that in order for them to have left our, our committee to go on to planning board, um, they would have approved the proposal that was put forward to us.
Yeah, and I think it is further down. It's a design, in one of the exhibits, it said January fifteenth, design review committee voted to recommend approval.
Okay.
But, but in this June ninth meeting, it, she didn't say that, so I mean, I assume that you did, but I, that it was approved, but I don't know, I just thought we had to write what was said during the meeting.
So maybe she was, since it was approved back in January, the beginning of the year, she was implying that in June meeting? I don't know, I just didn't understand why you took that out. And then I just, I just, another thing, I wanted just to go over again with regards to design review. I think there was somewhere in here where you said that the snow was in front of the truck bays. But always to review, to leave design review, they always have a snow removal plan, so I don't remember that the snow was in front of the truck bays. If I read that quick.
It definitely was, because I, it was a question I asked on October twentieth.
It wasn't the plan that you got, Michelle, it was the revised plan that came after it left design review. We got one plan that you guys said looked good, and then we got a revised plan, um, that, I don't know if you, later in October, after.
They had, you're talking about they revised something that we had you know, had submitted a snow removal, and then changed it afterwards.
Correct.
All right. I'm just trying to understand where these comments are coming from.
Sure.
I know when they would have had to pass that at design review. So you're saying it's changed and, okay.
It was at the very last meeting, we asked a lot about snow removal. And they, they added snow removal areas on the landscaped areas and on, in front of the doors. And I had asked that question that night, like, like you're blocking bay doors. So.
No, I just wanted to just stand.
Yep.
Okay. So I think we need direction on, Amy, if you go back to the, you had had a screenshot that you said not for inclusion, but
Oh, yeah.
Yep. So what is the correct?
Yeah, you gotta go down a little more. Oh, not too far. Sorry. There we go. Everybody's dizzy now.
So what, so Kathy, you had noted one thing, but we included differently here. Is this the correct thing to do here? What should we do? Because now we have somewhere we, I mean, to the point before about the memo. So prior to the deletion, it was listed in here, but now it's not. So if we want to reflect it somewhere, just now.
I'm sorry, Carrie, I need to catch up. We're in the decision part?
Oh, yeah.
Fact finding.
Oh, you're in fact findings, not decision?
No, this is just a general finding right here.
So which, which one is it that you're talking about? And Carrie, are you gonna um, vote on each one of these changes or?
I don't know. We have to think of, I mean, it's a lot to look at. So I think we need to really, you know, my first hope was to get everything out of the table and then figure out what, I mean, some of it, I think we can go by sections.
Okay, so what, so right now, the, the question of me is in the fact findings? And which one?
I guess my question, and maybe it's just for the board and board and Kathy too, but I, I've been reading all the minutes lately to catch up. And when I read decision of four hundred Cedar Hill, I had asked Kathy that night, say, should we say that um, should we add in a fact that the Conservation Commission and the Groundwater Advisory Committee approved the plan? And you said, no, the Conservation Commission is a separate board that acts under a different state statute and issues their own decision under the deadlines. And groundwater is part of the special permit. So, so for Cedar Hill, I questioned adding in the conservation stuff and you said, no, but.
I, I think on Cedar Hill, it was someone, I, I, I don't remember whether it was you, Amy, or not. Someone asked about including the Conservation Commission's Order of Conditions to the Decision. And, and I think that's what I responded to was saying that, you know, they, they have their own, you know, decision that gets recorded in their own appeal period. So that it wasn't necessary to include the Conservation Commission's decision. But you know, I mean, if that's what this, if that's what everyone is, you know, concerned about here, this number, actually, I don't know what number it is now, but where it says the Conservation Commission unanimously voted on June twenty ninth, twenty twenty to approve an order of conditions for the project. I mean, if that's, if that's causing people, you know, hard burn, you could take that out.
I was just trying to stay consistent. Like when I went back and looked at this decision, I did read the Cedar Hill decision and I read all the other Bartlett Street decisions. And um, I was trying to compare just to see, because this did, and then I didn't know if we left out all three, like the MIPA. And because we didn't talk about the MIPA. And so those were different things that were listed under the Conservation Commission's decision, not ours. So I just didn't know if they should come out because we didn't include them before. But it's something.
I think the reason why they are included here is again, you asked the applicant for a summary of the permits that um, they had received to date. And so that was a matter of your record, or it is a matter of your record. And so I think that that's, that's why it's reflected here. Is, is you had asked for the information and it's in the file. That's all.
So maybe the ones that were deleted up there are probably listed in the findings of fact. Although I know I never got a copy of the meatback because I asked for it, but it was listed in the memo.
Aren't we in the findings of facts? I'm confused.
Oh, yeah, I know.
We're in the findings of facts and i- isn't it twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen that we're talking about?
Yes, but up above, up above, when we were talking about, there was a whole section that was deleted by Carrie. And we said, where would that go? So I think that's where it's listed down here.
Yeah. So that's where, so right. So then it would kind of, well, just think about that one because I don't think they can be deleted in both spots. I just, I think it needs to be reflected somewhere. So we'll just have to.
Carrie, can I just um, remind everybody, I mean, you know, again, this is your process, but as you're going through this, you know, you have ninety days um, within which the decision needs to be filed. And um, you know, we're into the um, uh, January, you know, is, is the end of the ninety days, January eighteenth. So it needs to be, you know, filed by January eighteenth. So just for people to keep that in mind of, you know, you, you've got a meeting on the fifth and you've got a meeting on the nineteenth. So um,
A lot.
Maybe we decide on the fifth if people want to read it all.
Well, what if we do this? What if, is there anything else you want to explain that needs explaining that isn't clear, isn't evident by way of what it is? Or does anybody here have questions now that isn't clear to you? What it means? Like, Michelle, you had a couple of questions you asked, or if anybody else says, well, first of all, Millie, do you have anything that you wanted to add?
Um, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, this is actually a, a lot more detailed than, than I might have been aware that the decision would require. So um, I haven't really, this is the first big decision I've looked through. And to be honest with you, I'm a little overwhelmed with it. So I'd be hesitant to really.
That's okay.
Anything.
That's all right. Um, Anthony, do you have anything to add?
No, it's been, you know, where we started, I, I, you know, I read through the whole thing and I, the way it was, with the exception of some, a few areas where there was duplicative from you and Amy. Uh, and then like I said, maybe two very minor typos, if I understood it correctly. It, I think it looks good. And I think that the level of detail is important. Um, just to make sure that all the information that was, you know, presented and deliberated is made into record.
Yeah. And then, Michelle, do you have any other thought of anything that you wanted to add?
No, I guess it's since staff wrote the decision. I mean, we should, does Kathy have any feedback if you had time to go through this? Or did you just get this, Kathy?
No, no, I've, I've gone through um, both um, Carrie's and Amy's edits.
Okay. Do you have any feedback?
Well, I think most importantly is, is we need to look at this timeframe. And um, you know, I originally, you know, drafted the decision, um, provided it to Town Council. Um, and you know, Town Council made their edits. And um, which were very few. Um, I sent that to everybody, what their edits were. Um, most of it was, you know, grammatical, just to make things uh, flow a little bit easier and legalese speak. Um, and uh, so I would, I would assume that the board would want Town Council to review this again. Um, so you, you need to, you know, factor that in, uh, that Town Council needs to review this. Um, once you decide on what your edits are going to be. And then again, you know, it needs to all be filed. I certainly do not want, well, my comfort zone is I would not want to be going down to January eighteenth to file this.
No, and actually the sixteenth is a Saturday. Wait, did you say six, no, you said eighteenth, I'm sorry.
Eighteenth.
Okay. So.
So, and it's October twentieth is when you made the decision. Um, the um, the, the the way we always calculate is, is we start the day after. But if you, you know, just to be um, absolutely on, you know, to allow no error here, um, it could either, we could be looking at January seventeenth as the drop dead. Um, as to when this needs to be filed. And that is a Sunday. Um, so then we would have to be looking at the fifteenth, which is a Friday.
Okay.
So that's just a difference of a day, but because there's a weekend in there.
Yep. Okay. So I guess it depends on how comfortable the board feels. Do you want to, we can spend the time to go through it now, or if you want to take it little by little, or if you want to take it back with you, we'd be under a little tighter. But in that case, let's see, we'd have to be back on the fifth. We'd have to basically be at the table, ready to say, here's the parts we like, here's what we don't like, this thing is passed and ready to go off. And as soon as council says it's fine, we'd have to be able to be ready to sign.
Yeah. Carrie, if I can, um, I just realized January eighteenth is Martin Luther King Day. Um, so that's a, a, a holiday that Town Hall would be closed, so it couldn't be filed that day. So again, I think, you know, that we need to be looking at January fifteenth. And the, the, the statement that you just made about, you know, having uh, Town Council review it. You know, if you're, if you're looking at talking about this more on the fifth, and then you would make your final edits on the fifth?
Yeah, we have, actually, after tonight, he'd have to, he'd have to, well, no, because it won't be ready for him to look at. Yeah, we have to be finalizing on the fifth. We have no choice.
And then, you know, you, you need to factor in, I, well, again, I would suggest you need to factor in, you know, if, if he comes back and suggests, you know, this, this can be added, this shouldn't be added, or, you know, whatever advice he offers you. You know, do you, do you want to discuss that bef- before you come in to sign the decision?
Kathy, can I make a suggestion? Um, since there are so many significant changes or additions, could we do legal counsel in like a two-phased approach? Like, for example, take what has been given to us now, have legal counsel look at it and then give feedback to the board so that then we can discuss it on the fifth?
Um, sure. You, so, so we could present it to him that that these are the changes that the planning board wants to make.
Well, this is, this is a significant amount of changes. Like there's, there's a lot of them, right?
Oh, it, it, yeah. It, I mean, it, it basically doubles the size of the decision that, that I wrote.
Rather than going line item by line item, isn't it better for him to just take, you know, these fifty or sixty changes? You know, look at them over and say, you know, reviewed it and here's what I would agree with and not agree with. And that gives a board in the fifth, sort of like a baseline to go by to wrap it up?
Sure. Yep.
I mean, I don't know how the board feels about it, but at least he take, he can look at all of these changes and say, well, give you feedback on it, right? Because there's so many of them, right? And then based on that, then you can go back and either disagree or agree with them and then make a final ru- a final decision on the fifth so that you have enough time to meet the deadline.
Okay, so I'm just thinking that timeline in my head to make sure that works. So then at the fifth, when we come back and finalize it, that's, there's, it's not going back anywhere else. That's the day we are saying, yes, this is ready to sign.
I'm thinking we should meet again. Like, instead of meeting on the fifth and then whatever second date we picked, we should meet like the fifth and the tenth or the fifth and the twelfth, like just so we make the date. Like, I think we need two meetings before the decision goes out. So if we meet on the fifth and say, okay, this is what Town Council said, then we have to go through it all. Or we meet on January thirtieth, I mean, December thirtieth. I'm sure people don't want to do that.
Well, does there any, is it, so um, so it sounds like Millie still wants to go back through it. I don't know if Michelle needs to go back through it. Is there any reason that we can't do in a similar manner to what, you know, Carrie and Amy did is, is if there's changes, um, have the changes published and have Kathy put those out to the board? Um, or maybe right after uh, Town Council has the opportunity to review it, get that out, then we can review it. If there's additional changes, people can send those back and filter back through Kathy. And then we'd be more prepared, at least on the fifth, and maybe it's not the fifth. We're, we're gonna cover, we can cover a lot of ground between thou- now and then. Uh, and be more prepared to say, you know, what do you think of these changes or, or these, you know, edits by Town Council? Um, I mean, and just what I'm saying is we can kind of keep the ball rolling without having, you know, a quorum. And not that we're discussing it.
Hmm. Okay. Uh, is there anything that we can solve, uh, we can fix here that we know we need to fix so that we're not? Like, for example, I think we need to solve the memo thing, figuring out. But I don't think we can remove them in both spots. If they're on the memo, they've been submitted to us. I guess they're, they're on public record. So somehow they need to be reflected. And then wa- was there anything else?
Well, I pulled this page up because this is where I put my paragraph in, but it probably is pretty similar to your paragraphs. So I didn't really have time to, I guess I should read both and do we want to merge it? Or I can just leave it? Does it, your paragraphs might cover what I was saying too. I'm just trying to figure right now and then I can just take mine out.
I thought it was covered in other areas, but you, you wrote it down. So you'd have to see if you think that as well.
Right. So I hate to take people's time. I can't concentrate when I have people waiting.
Carrie, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah. I just couldn't hear you till now. Yes.
Okay, because I'm having technical difficulty, but you can hear me, right?
Um, yes, but it doesn't, Michelle, is that you? Oh, you're frozen. That's why.
I'm frozen. Yeah. I'm a precursor for tomorrow's weather. But at least, okay, I just want to make sure you heard me. Yeah. I mean, I'm just in favor of letting legal counsel, like we've done a first draft. I've gone through, um, and there's a lot of changes and everyone's like, okay, and had questions. My only feedback is I'm in favor of, let's have Town Council look at it and get back to us at our next meeting and then have another discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just want to verify then, Carrie, which, which version is going to Town Council? Is it your edits? Or, or Amy's edits? Because some of your edits are um, not that they're in opposition to each other, but they're, they're.
They're conflicting. There is one.
Yeah.
There is one conflicting? I don't know.
Yeah, because you're, I'm saying that didn't happen at the hearing and it's represented in other places, but then you're taking it out in other places that I'm relying on. So we just need to, if we need to, i- if we need to represent that because it's part of public record, it needs a home. So oh, did we lose Michelle?
I think the, I mean, personally, I think the, the, the home is, it makes sense in the findings of facts. You know, that, that it's, that it's put there. I mean, I can, I can make, I mean, if you want, I can make a, a reference to or correct my reference to whatever meeting that memo was um, you, you know, supplied to you. Um, and so simply the, the, the what's up now on everyone's screen, you know, ta- take it, take it out of there, but just make a, you know, just put a statement in there that, that the memo was supplied or something to you.
Oh, yeah. So I did add that. So Michelle updated the board that they submitted a memo and the memo that outlined all the permits. So that's.
So, okay, so that could, so just leave it, you know, it could, it could be just left as that. And then in the findings of fact.
All these statements?
Yeah.
Yeah. That makes sense to me.
Yeah. That's all I was saying. So that's why Amy, your edit sort of negated that, that it would make it so it wasn't reflected at all. But that was the only conflict, I think.
Okay. Okay. So we'll just make sure, yeah, that all those are down there. And then do we ask Dave Dineski if there were some that we didn't get? Like, do we mention, um, the conservation things? I guess it doesn't hurt, you're saying, Kathy?
Yeah, like I said, Amy, I mean, you know, perhaps I'm mistaken, but I, but I thought in the past, you know, the questions had been, not in this decision, but the questions had been about, you know, should we include the, the conservation commission order of conditions? And, and, you know, again, those conditions are, you know, re- recorded and, um, you know, with DEP, ha- you know, have their own appeal process, you know, recorded with the town clerk. And, you know, you, you all talked a lot about the conservation commission in this meeting. So I, I don't, I mean, in this hearing process, so I don't think that, I mean, to me, it just doesn't make sense that you take out the conservation commission.
Right.
But, I mean, uh, it's just a fact, I mean, it, no, no one, you, you, you can't argue either way. I mean, they did issue an order of conditions, period. You know, I mean, it's not, it's not anything controversial.
No, I was just trying to save space too, because it was getting bigger.
Well, it's one sentence.
Well, I mean, there were a bunch of conservation things, so I didn't know. Because I did go back and look at that decision and, and we didn't talk about, you know, even the conservation approved it, but I don't, I don't care either way, I was just trying to be, um, following other decisions.
Okay, so...
Definitely come out when it goes to Dave Dineski, this little, because this I was just using as reference, Kathy, this little paragraph.
I, I, I don't, I don't feel comfortable editing your edits.
Oh, I can edit it right now, because this has both of ours, and then send it to you.
Okay, okay, if, yep, if the board is comfortable with that, I mean, I don't, I, I, I don't want to, I, I want to provide him what you have.
Okay. So while I'm going to unstrike out, if that's a word, these things, these...
We get it.
I was a math person, grammar is not my strong point. Which is why I had the problems with the paragraphs above. Should I go back to that paragraph where Carrie and I had similar ones and, and then we can just combine it or just take mine out? So right here, I changed summarize the latest traffic report, but you had summarize the latest traffic report, so I'll take that out. Do you care? I mean, it's mine, so I'll just take it out if nobody cares.
Nope.
Carrie said the same thing. I'm trying to make it easier. I should have reviewed this earlier, I just ran out of time, this is huge.
It is.
Um, the application was reviewed as a generic ref warehouse I was going into. But I think, did you include that, Carrie? You talked about the different types of warehouses. So should I take, I'll take that out? I guess I talked about the traffic light, was that in there somewhere?
No.
Does it matter? Because we didn't ask for a condition of traffic light. But I guess what I was trying to get at, he was saying that if this was more than a generic warehouse, you would need a traffic light.
Yes.
Maybe the traffic light sentence can...
You have a traffic light up top, though, it would trigger a traffic light.
Right, I was trying to take it out, because this is your paragraph. So we don't have, I was trying to take out some of my things.
Oh, I thought you were talking about taking out the bottom paragraph that's highlighted.
Oh, no, that's, that's the same as this. But I think these changes might be the same as yours here.
Well, if there are duplicates, I take them out, but if there's something that you like, keep them.
Um, you said assumed lower intensity warehouse use, they did not account for more intense use. I could just say, um, if it were a higher intensity use, a generic, then generic warehouse that would trigger a need for a traffic light on Lyman and Bartlett. I don't know. I'm just trying to combine the two so we can send it out and it's not confusing to town council. So I'm just gonna take out this sentence now because you talked about, about it too. I just don't want, yeah, I don't want to get that applicant. Just trying to get mine out. Okay. For some reason, I can't get rid of, oh, because maybe it was his re- reviewed. Because it won't let me delete it. I will just unstrike out it, that word again. It won't let me change it.
Amy, why don't we just, um, leave your edits as they are? Because he'll just say that this is repetitive or something, and that could be part of the feedback.
Okay.
How's that sound? And then at least that allows us to
Move on.
Move on, because we've got a lot to do tonight, um, and he's gonna just say if it's repetitive, that's all.
Okay, for some reason, Kathy, I can't, I just, I'm just trying to, this word reviewed is supposed to stay here. But it won't.
Carrie, can, um, can I, can I just ask a question of the board where, at least, I think if I heard this correctly, that Anthony had gone through these edits. It, it sounds like Michelle has gone through the edits, but, um, Millie, um, needs to go through them in, in mo- more detail or, you know, spend more time on them, Millie. So, so might Millie have some edits that need to go to town council or? Or we'll sort of just take that as it, if it comes?
If it comes, yeah, I, I probably won't, again, because I have not done a decision with this detail before, and, um...
If you do notice one missing, yeah, we could probably, yeah.
Okay, so are we at a point where this is the doc that's going?
I just had to ask one thing here. Um, I crossed out this statement, attorney Johnahoo discussed the footprint of the building stating it had been reduced in size based on prior meetings with the conservation commission and design review, and could not be reasonably reduced further. He did state that, but I went to all the conservation meetings, so I went back and watched them and read the minutes. And they were not reduced in size based on prior meetings with conservation commission. Conservation commission got the same design we did, the hundred and fifty thousand square feet. It might have been reduced, like, meeting with Mia or staff before it got to design review. But I, I definitely attended and I went back and watched the hearings. And design review, I mean, not design review, but design review and conservation discussed this application in January, and it was submitted to us in December, so everybody got the same design, the hundred and fifty thousand square feet. So I wanted to take out that statement, only because I do know he did say it, but it wasn't true, so I don't know what to do about that. But, I mean, we didn't, we didn't have every single sentence from the hearing in there. But I just wanted to say why I took it out, and if anybody wants to go back and look at the conservation commission meeting in January, there were no minutes for design review, so I couldn't check that. But I know both meetings took place after the December, um, submittal of the application, which was a hundred and fifty thousand square feet. So if they got a bigger building after we got the smaller building, it just wouldn't make sense. And I went back through all the minutes of two thousand and nineteen for conservation, and I didn't see where they had ever talked about it before January of this year. So, I mean, he did say it, but I don't know where he got the information.
Could you just follow that up and say this statement could not be verified?
I mean, I think you take it out, because we didn't, we didn't include every sentence
Okay.
in the three hour hearing, so I just took it out.
All right, well, why don't we just send it, and if board members come around and say, wait, that we do want that, or we don't think that, we can always fix it. But the purpose for now is just to at least get a gut check from council, and see what he has to say.
Okay, so I'll send this one to you, Kathy, right now. So it's the, the final one that we just talked about?
Sure, yep.
All right.
I'd be interested to know, Kathy, um, when you send this over to him. I, I was surprised, and I don't know why, well, I know I was surprised. He, he didn't include or add anything that were groundwater specific findings, and this was for a groundwater permit. So I was surprised to not see him give more input on what would we say? Not what would we say, but what, what, where, we talked a lot about groundwater, and we talked a lot about the reasons why we denied the permit for groundwater. But he, there was no input from him on groundwater related findings. So, I don't know, I just, I didn't understand that, and I'd be curious to know why he didn't think they should be there, or why he didn't add them, or, I don't know, I didn't, I caught that, I thought I read the decision, I thought I passed it by mistake, and I didn't, so, um, I don't know if, if there was a reason.
I mean, he, he reve- am I muted?
Oh, his, his job is to just review what you wrote, not add to it?
Well, he, I mean, he, you know, he did, uh, I mean, yeah, basically, he reviewed what I wrote. But, I mean, he, but his job, you know, was not and is not to, you know, go through all of the hearings and watch the tapes and, I mean, that's, that's not, you know, that, that's not his role. So I think on the, um, you know, with, with the groundwater, um, where I had, um, I'm just looking for that now. I mean, I think the only reference to groundwater, and I guess that's your point, Carrie, is that there's only a couple of references, um, is saying that the groundwater committee, you know, had voted to recommend approval of the special permit.
It just didn't reflect that we denied it for groundwater related reasons, and they were specific to the permit because we locked down the criteria. So that, I guess maybe I didn't know exactly what his job, his role was in this. Was his job to kind of look for that and look at our bylaws and make sure we matched our criteria, you know, to the groundwater permits or not? And maybe his job was just, like you said, he didn't go back to the hearings. His role was to read through and make sure it didn't say anything maybe out, out of line or whatever the case.
Right, correct.
Okay. All right, so that will go to him, we'll come back around, and then for everybody who I know has a lot to read, you know, look at it again, make sure if there are, maybe flag things in advance that you maybe don't agree with or that you know you're, you're, you're ready to approve, so that we can just go straight down and you already have it flagged on your side, whether you maybe are ready to approve the whole thing, or maybe have a few things flagged, but we'll be ready to go, and we can go through it quickly. Sounds good. Okay.
I have a quick question. Um, I wonder if we should just hold, like, the date of January twelfth, the week after the fifth? In case we need it, like, if we don't need it and everything's all set on the fifth, then we'll just send it off on the fifth, but same, we need the twelfth. I was wondering if we could just hold that date in the, in the Zoom license?
The twelfth is, um, groundwater, correct, Fred? So the twelfth is groundwater, and, um, and I honestly don't know at this point, we still have another week before people have to file uh, ZBA applications, which may or may not include groundwater. So that may necessarily not be an available night, Amy, because you might be at groundwater, and Fred. So, you know, if you, if, if right now, if we wanted to, um, and the thirteenth actually is not available, I have that tentatively for design review. So if you want to look at, actually, the eleventh, the eleventh will be the conservation commission, so they'll have the webinar license. On the eleventh?
Do we need the webinar, like, or can we do what we're doing tonight? Is this a webinar?
Um, th- this meeting is a webinar, yeah, I, I schedule all the planning board, um, I mean, it, it, if you don't have any public hearings, it doesn't have to be. We can look at the fourteenth.
Can we do the eleventh without the webinar?
No, sorry, I'm sorry. The, um, the, the fourteenth is, is cutting it too close.
Yeah. How about the eleventh without the webinar? Do we need a webinar?
Well, I'll, I'll tell you this, I know there's, there's two hosts, and, and they'll both have a meeting that night. They'll be the pla- they'll be the board of selectmen and the conservation commission. We can try, you, you know, you could look at meeting earlier on the eleventh. You know, if you wanted to meet at, I mean, and I know, I, I know this would, you know, interrupt people's workday, but I mean, if you wanted to meet at, you know, four or five o'clock.
Well, what if we get to the fifth and see if we run it? It sounds like if we, if we don't need to run it as a webinar, we have more flexibility?
Uh, yeah, a little bit more, I, I still need a host, but, yep, there's, there's one webinar license and two meeting licenses. So, so there can only be a total of three meetings a night, um, which we have had happen.
All right, so there's no clear, is there a clear winner that week, or do we really be having to shift things around? The week of the eleventh?
No, there really isn't.
All right.
Unless you wanted, I mean, to, to me, right now, the only thing that would work is if you met earlier in the day. On, on any one of those nights.
Okay, and we wouldn't have to book that now because nobody is meeting at that time?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fair.
See what happens on the fifth, because I'm, my goal is we really wrap it up on the fifth. I don't want to have to bring it too close. But to your point, Amy, we should, I mean, to have, just in case, we should have an emergency There's not a lot of competition for that early slot, then we can probably get something taken care of.
So if this goes to town council tomorrow, we'll probably get it in like a couple of weeks, or, I know Christmas is next week, but, but we'll have it before the fourth. That's what I'm hoping.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, you know, again, I don't know what his schedule is, Amy, and, um, and it, and if, you know, he's suddenly away for two weeks, I'm sure there's someone else in the firm that will be, you know, he ju- he, I mean, there's many people on the firm. And there's many other attorneys that we deal with, but for other matters. And, but Dave is our, you know, land use person. But, you know, I, I think it's safe to assume that, yes, we would have it before the, I mean, we have to, we have to.
Five day window or something, because this was a lot to cover.
Okay, so it's gonna go to council, come back to us, um, and we will be back on the fifth for that one. So, right, yes, good? Okay, all right, so moving on, I want to make sure we get to everything. So four twenty-five Whitney Street peer review update, anything for that, Kathy?
Uh, no, actually, we're, the, um, the peer review has not started, um, but it's just a, it's, it's just how, you know, the, the, the businesses work. Um, we are awaiting, um, the funding, um, from STERIS, which is, you know, on its way. Um, and as soon as we have the check here at the town hall, then the consultant, you know, the peer reviewer will start. So I would anticipate, you know, that, that should be, and I thought it would be in the mail today. So, I mean, it's just a matter of, you know, a couple of days, I'm assuming.
Okay. Okay, then, um, and we have our hearing, our public hearing was continued to January fifth, or the second date was STERIS?
It, um, it was January fifth.
Okay, so really, we're not gonna have anything for them, most likely, at that time?
Yeah, so I mean, you know, maybe I'll, um, suggest to them that they ask for a continuance.
Yeah, maybe so they don't have to go through. Yeah, maybe so they don't have to go through, I mean, it costs money and all that to show up. Okay, next on the agenda is traffic concerns. Kathy, you mentioned you got to, got in touch with CMRPC, did, what did?
We don't have a debt, a date yet. Sujatha and I'm, I, Sujatha has a very long last name and I just don't want to mispronounce it tonight. But Sujatha is one of their traffic engineers and I actually have a conference call with her tomorrow. Antrish settles on a couple of other issues too. And so we're going to talk about the, the, the traffic suggestions or the, the, the traffic questions from the planning board. And then setting that up for Sujatha to come or, you know, to, to zoom in on one of your meetings. And I certainly won't do it on the 5th. You know, why don't I look at the, the second meeting, which I think we, I think which is the 19th? You want to, you want to do that, is that okay with everybody? Assuming it's okay with.
What, did she give any idea of what, you know, she could talk about? Like we had talked about, can she speak to, can we get a regional look at what's going on? Or can we get a look at what other people are doing for traffic plans or other people in this problem? Was she able to speak to all of that?
Yeah, I had, I had asked her, when we first spoke, I had talked about that the, the, the questions and concerns from the planning board were, you know, locally related and regionally related. So locally, you know, what is it that the planning board can, can or should or, you know, be, be working, how to be working with applicants on traffic mitigation and how that fits in with, you know, staff and, and other boards? And then as far as a regional level, I asked her that, you know, what is she aware of? What are other communities doing? You know, we're not the only communities, you know, being faced with warehouses. I mean, that's, that's what's good or bad. You know, that's obviously, that's what's happening in a lot of communities. I mean, you read about it every, almost every day with the Amazon warehouse being built or being proposed. So, so she's going to look at that also.
Okay, and we, you said, did she estimate how many hours that would take? I know you mentioned that.
No, no, we'll talk about that tomorrow, Carrie. But you, you know, you as a whole, for the town of Northborough, we have 17 hours. And part of what I'm talking to Trish about tomorrow is we're a little over budget on the open space plan. And do we need to make up for some of that by using, you know, the local planning hours? And then, and then also what, you know, what the traffic review, you know, how many hours would that take generally? You know, as far as Sujatha's preparation and then, you know, attending a meeting.
Okay.
So does, does January 19th, is, is that a good meeting? A date to ask Sujatha if she's available? Or, or do you want to do it on the 5th?
No, but I'm thinking, well, I don't know how other board members feel. I'm wondering if we're going to run into trouble because we have to get our bylaws in place. And I want her to have enough time. And I also wasn't sure if any other boards or committees wanted to be a part of that. Like if the master plan implementation committee was up and running and they wanted to attend? Or if the board of selectmen wanted to attend or ZBA or anybody really? I didn't know if we want to open it up for, like if we have these hours and we have this resource, I don't want to just limit it to us if it can be helpful to other groups. So I don't know if that's something we can even, I don't know how the, the other board members feel about it. If that's, Millie, we lost you for a second. I was just saying, if we have that resource, do we want to make it open for other boards and committees? If they, if they are also curious or staff, obviously, although I think you would, you guys would be the most interested. So if we want to make it something that we offer to multiple groups, do we make it something, not just jam it in in a planning board meeting? I don't know if board members have any thoughts on that or?
It's good to me. I think it should be open to whoever wants to come.
Kathy, do you think people would be interested? Do you think implementation would be interested or board selectmen would be interested?
Well, as far as the implementation committee, I know the, the board of selectmen on the 21st, I think it is. That's when they will be, is it 21st? That's when they will be, you know, putting forth the, the people that they have interviewed. So, you know, I, I, I doubt that the implementation committee will have met by your meeting in, your second meeting in January. But we can cer- certainly put it out to the people who are going to be assigned to the implementation committee. I, I think it's, I think it's fine to do it at a planning board meeting.
Yeah, but just, but my one concern then is just we need time to get these bylaws out the door. So does that jam us up? We, do we just need placeholders by the February 4th or do we need the full?
I have to provide language.
So I don't know if February is a better option for CMRPC or much?
Sure, if you want to look at the 16th, I mean, that'll be after you put in the bylaws.
That might make better sense. What does the rest of the board think? Should we get our bylaws figured out before we?
I, I think so, yeah. I agree.
Okay, so I'll, I'll check with her about that date tomorrow.
Then we have time to build excitement over it.
Because traffic discussions are so stimulating.
I think, I think people are.
Sorry Fred.
So one other thing I wanted to mention, so obviously a lot of communications have come to the planning board recently. I think they were actually addressed to the board of selectmen, but we were included. I think, did everyone have a chance to see some of the emails, some of the concerns over in the, the area over downtown where the warehouses are? Yeah, so, you know, now it sounds like there is an issue of possible, you know, whether they're using the neighborhoods as a turnaround or, so again, it sounds like the, the condition of turning left isn't really happening. So I don't know Kathy, if you ever, I know you said you were talking to them all. Did, was there any response from them or any insight?
There has, there has been, yeah, there's been a lot of discussion that's been happening in-house. And, and I believe that at the selectmen's meeting on the 21st, it's, I'm not sure if it's the DPW director or the town administrator. Okay, so I'm not sure who's leading that discussion, but it's on the agenda for, or will be on the agenda for the December 21st selectmen's. But between myself and Fred and we've had discussions with some of the managers of the various businesses over there. We have had the, the, the police chief, the town administrator, and I also think the DPW director, they've all had, you know, conversations also. I mean, these are all, you know, occurring, you know, I, I can't say on a daily basis, but signs are going to be erected on town property. Some of the businesses have committed right away to putting signs at the end of their driveways. So it's, it's still, you know, and I know it never happens fast enough for the residents and I totally understand that. But, but there, but there's a lot of work going on and, and I, I, I don't know what the schedule of the signs is, but that's, that's been a lot of the discussion. And then there's letters that either have gone out, I drafted the letter. But it either, it already did go out or it's about to go out, you know, again, to all the managers. You know, the, I mean, not, not so much the managers, but I mean, whoever the head honcho is at each one of the companies that's physically located, located in Northborough.
Okay, and one other question was, we had, one of our conditions was about that noise study, Bob. And I was wondering, it's, did, did they ever provide a noise study to you or?
The noise study consists of two parts. I'm sorry?
You did get one.
Not yet. Getting one before Christmas. That's what I've been told from the Gutierrez company. They said the study has been done, they're putting it in presentable format document, whatever, what have you. And that should be coming to me, I'm thinking next week, okay? The noise study consists of two parts. One is the one when it's basically quiet. And then the second part is when the facility is up, running at full or close to full operation, which from what I'm hearing is not going to be for several months. They're still trying to hire enough people to do the jobs. So if people are looking for a noise study for some sort of result, they're going to have to be patient because it's the part two of the study that allows you to see the difference between things at rest and things at full, full operation.
Okay, I see. So I think maybe the perception is that they are operating, but you're saying they're not fully operating. We're not even seeing the full operation at this point.
They're beginning to ramp up, but they've had trouble doing, doing virtually anything in terms of what they plan to be doing. My understanding is that they're only using one of the two buildings at this point in terms of ramping up operations.
So then I think as a planning board, I mean, obviously, Michelle, you've talked about this a lot, about the whole, you know, mitigation and what can we do and things like that. And Kathy, I'm glad you mentioned that about, to Sujatha about what, what's our role in this? And how can we, going forward with these applications, make sure that we're doing everything we can? And that enforcement piece we've talked about before, it's, it's so difficult. I'd be interested to hear from this, from what Sujatha has to say, do other towns struggle with enforcement? I mean, it must be, we must all be in a similar boat, so I think that'll be really helpful. Any other things on the traffic concerns, traffic discussion or concerns in general? Okay, master plan hasn't happened yet. So I guess we're down to the town meeting zoning bylaws. And Kathy, you sent over a memo today, I don't know if you want to, do you want to share that or do you want me to pull it up or?
No, actually, I didn't, I didn't put it on this laptop, Carrie. So if you, if you have it. And, you know, clearly I know that, or I would be shocked if anyone had time to, to look at it. And, you know, our intent or my intent was obviously to have it out to you sooner. But that's just unfortunately how it goes sometimes.
Okay, is this the right document?
Yes, yep.
Okay. So you go, it's your, do you want to walk through it? I'll just.
Sure, sure, I'll, yeah, I can, the, yeah, I, I mean, I can go through it point by point or just in general, Carrie?
No, well, I think we should, so we last left with what we, we presented, we narrowed down, we took a couple out. And then you and the team are going to look through and figure out what your recommendations were. So is this for each and every one that we did or just a couple?
No, I, I have a, we put together a comment for each one of the proposals.
So I think walking through each one makes sense unless.
Okay. So basically what, myself and Bob and we included Fred this year on, on a zoning discussion because some of these have to do with groundwater, specifically with groundwater and then, and some of the other topics that he's involved with as town engineer and DPW. So just starting off with, I mean, this, I didn't put these in any particular order, but obviously I'll go in the order of my memo. So the first one that we talked about was the commercial storage facility. And Amy had proposed some language about prohibiting commercial storage facilities in the Business West zoning district. And, you know, again, we, we met, we discussed it. We talked about, you know, are there any existing, you know, existing in Northborough now? Because we're, we're always, when we talk about changing uses or changing definitions of uses or affecting the use table in, in any way, we always have to be very mindful of, you know, are we throwing someone into nonconformity? Because there's a whole host of, you know, issues that come with nonconformity. So in this particular instance, between the three of us, we did not, we did not come up with anyone in the business, today presently in the Business West that we believe would be qualified as commercial storage facility. And, and so we, we didn't see an issue with changing it from, actually, I'm not sure if it's allowed a special permit, but changing it to a prohibited use in the Business West. So that's, that's the first one. The, the next couple or the next two or three, which I can, I'll lump together. One is about the proposed language for the nonconforming uses and structures section of the zoning bylaw. And that's in chapter 708 or section 708. And so, again, nonconformity, big issue in any community. And what we, after we vetted this, we paid careful attention to all of these. But after discussing it, what we really think needs to happen on not only the nonconforming uses and structures, the, the suggestion about changing contractors' yards, the definitions for that and then possibly where those can be located or not located. And then also the, the list of prohibited uses and the suggestion about adding that to the zoning bylaw. We firmly believe that we, that all three of those need to be vetted out with, in addition to the planning board, also with the zoning board of appeals. And that perhaps we look at, you know, a joint meeting as opposed to, you know, the planning board discussing it at one meeting and the ZBA discussing it at another meeting, that, you know, we would suggest that we have a joint meeting and, and to talk about those, you know, get input from the zoning board of appeals. They're the ones who deal with all of these actually. And to, to get their, you know, opinions and, and thoughts on it. So that's, that, that's what we had concluded with those three in particular. The Craft Brewery, we looked at the zoning bylaw specifically just for Craft Brewery. And are there places in the zoning bylaw that either, A, would, you know, obviously today don't specifically say something about Craft Brewery? But if that's all that we're looking at, you know, does it fit in with existing definitions? And, and are we, you know, is there, do we need, even need to add something to it? Some of the questions we had about the, the Craft Brewery are the, whether or not someone, and these are just things that we need to consider, is, you know, is someone, or, I, I guess what, what our, what our thoughts were or what the board's thoughts were? Are you looking at enticing a, or, or trying to encourage a brewery that we consider to be more of an industrial use? And so is it the, is it the brewery that you want as the industrial use? And then hoping or thinking that there might be, you know, an accessory use as a restaurant and, and a taproom? Or are you looking at more of a, a restaurant that, you know, is serving, you know, is serving their own beer? But it's not, but they're not necessarily manufacturing it as far as for production for sale? You know, such as a treehouse or, you know, Wachusett where they're, you know, filling and selling, you know, bottles and cans? And then to expand upon that, what we're, what we wanted to talk to the board more about, and you all started to talk about this at the last meeting, was is it just a brewery that you're, that you're thinking about or should we be expanding this to include what, what I refer to? And, you know, there may be a better word for this, but, you know, artisanal food products. I think Bob had talked about this at the last meeting in particular where our, you know, do we want to just limit it to a craft brewery? Or do we want to also look at, you know, distilleries, wineries? And then do we want to look at, include other specialty, maybe, you know, foods? You know, cheese shops, the coffee roaster, a tea house? We were trying to, I think we were hungry when we were talking about this the other day. Because then we came up with spaghetti sauce and barbecue sauce and, you know, so, and it could be any of those. You know, I mean, that really is, you know, something that's very popular, not just in Massachusetts, you know, and not just in. Not just in Massachusetts, you know, and not just in New England, but that is something that is very popular. You, um, hot sauce, um, at the um, you know, Amy, I'm just thinking about the um, the various people that have been at the. Um, uh, craft, uh, you know, um, or the food. Tables that you have had at Apple Fest, you know, with the various people that, I mean, there's been venison, there's been barbecue, there's been maple syrup. So. We just wanted to have a bit of a more discussion on that so that we know how to. Kind of craft the language and, you know, wh- where, where. What, what's the home for it in the, in the zoning by law? And then um, I've reached out to um. Um, especially with beer, uh, or with a brewery, um, we have to look at water usage. And again, we're on, you know, the town is on MWRA, so it's not probably an issue in North Bro. Um, but we've gotta look at water usage, we have to look at, you know, available licenses and, you know, and how, how does this get? Classified, I mean, this is just something that I don't normally do, but you know, with the Board of Selectmen, um, you know, how, how this is all licensed, so. Um, these are just all the, you know, the parts of it that we have to look at.
Kathy, if I may break in just briefly, um, it's not just water use issue, it's um, uh, sewer capacity as well. You know, a lot of the breweries and wineries and whatnot, they, they, they use an expansive amount of water. Uh, and they generate a huge amount of wastewater as well.
That's true, if it comes in, it's gotta go out, right? Um, then uh, the couple of other, or two or three other bylaw proposals that you had presented, we talked about. Um, with the accessory dwelling unit. We looked at that very carefully with what our existing accessory dwelling. Unit by law allows and versus what we were talking about. Um, with this proposed legislation that's being reviewed at the state level. None of us are sure where that legislation is at this point, but um, some of the, some of the. Information that Bob had or, or has heard about from, from the uh, building inspectors is that, you know. The, the um, sort of the, the cl- the classes or the, the clients that um, you were. Talking about Carrie in particular, you know, for elderly and disabled. There has been talk that that um, the, those classes might be moved into um, the um. Exempt uh, part of the state statute, so it's not even something that we would necessarily have to address. And even if it wasn't, we believe that right now today, our accessory dwelling unit by law would allow. You, you know, there's no prohibition as far as who can occupy an accessory dwelling unit. Our by law today talks about that um, whether it's the accessory dwelling unit or the main residence that. One of them has to be owner occupied. So, so we looked at some of the language changes or language suggestions. And, and we thought that some of it w- would, would end up being more onerous than, than, than helpful. And, and causing, you know, uh, um, an additional encumbrance actually about, you know, having to check. Um, who the occupants are, how old they are, you know, so these are the things that we took out in two thousand nine. And when we put in this accessory dwelling unit and we tried to make it as broad as possible so that. You know, again, it wasn't limited to specifically an in-law or it wasn't limited to, you know, a blood relative. Um, you know, or you could only rent it out to, uh, you know, your, you know, st- you know, child student. You know, coming back from college or something, but, but anybody could, could be in the accessory dwelling unit. So we thought that at this point, um, that, that the by law uh, covered a- all these. Um, various situations. And then we looked at um, again, the size of it. And, you know, there was some discussion obviously about, you know, increasing the size. And so far, you know, Bob went back and looked at um, how many of these come through and, and there, no. With the exception of one, and like we said at the last meeting, it was just, it was about um, a closet. Um, there really, that nobody has had an issue with the size. We didn't look at how many bedrooms people are building, um, and that certainly is something that we can do, um, if people are concerned about that, but. But the seven hundred square feet should definitely take care of two bedrooms a- at this point. So, so right now, we were, we were thinking that, that our accessory dwelling unit covers the. Some of the, the questions that were raised um, at the last couple of meetings. The uh, the, the next section that was talked about as far as um. Possibly changing the language was in the groundwater protection overlay district by law. And there's, there was some suggestion or is some suggested language about. Changing the special permit criteria. And um, right now, the groundwater by law has three very specific criteria. That the groundwater advisory committee and then the, the special permit granting authority need to, you know, weigh. Uh, you know, need to consider. And when we looked at the, the sort of what I call the standard criteria that, you know, is in our by law and just about every by law in Massachusetts. Um, cause it's out of the state statute, but when we look at those criteria, like I just pulled out three as, as an instance. Uh, or as an example, that, that really wouldn't work to, to have the groundwater advisory committee or the SPGA. Make a finding about, you know, is, is the ground, is the proposed groundwater use? And, and again, what we're talking about is, you know, the um, you know, how much, how, how many gallons or how many products? You know, of hazardous material might be in a, in a particular building. So, you know, is it a nuisance or a hazard to vehicles or pedestrians? Well, you know, that really can't, because it's all about groundwater, you know, the, the, the concern is, is it a, is it a um. Uh, is it an issue with the, with the groundwater, you know, does it affect the aquifer? Not, not that it affects vehicles or pedestrians. Another one of the criteria uh, for, you know, general special permit is about, you know, being in harmony with the master plan. Well, again, or compatible with, uh, excuse me, with the master plan. So, so to talk about um, to, to compare a, like just as an example, to compare a. A, a paint, a paint store or, or a paint warehouse. You know, how, how ca- how can you say whether a paint warehouse is in, is in harmony with the master plan? You know, we, it's an industrial use or is it a commercial use, you know, that, that we could say. Is whether that's in harmony with the master plan or not, but I mean, to specifically talk about whether this. Uh, you know, company that's, that's using or storing chemicals of some sort, is that in harmony with the master plan? And then another one of the criteria, and again, these are just three examples, but another one of the criteria is about. Um, is it compatible with historic development patterns of the town? You know, again, I'll use and maybe it's not the best example, but it's the only thing I could think of, but again, but, you know, a, a paint, a paint company. Uh, you know, h- how, how do we look at whether that's, uh, you know, his, you know. Compares to the historic development of the town. So that's why we thought, uh, you know, that the criteria, the seven criteria. That are used for general special permit. You know, are not applicable to the groundwater. And, and the three criteria that the groundwater by law contains. You know, were very specific and were, and were, you know, put, put in the by law in nineteen eighty six. Um, and, and, and they make sense, they make sense to us. If the board does wanna consider, you know, making changes to those criteria, again, like with the other bylaws. Um, we think that um, in particular, that the groundwater advisory committee, you know, should be um, uh, consulted with. And that the planning board, you know, either reach out to the groundwater advisory committee or, you know, you have them. Come into a meeting or, you know, invite them to a meeting, whatever, but we think that there's, that there needs to be some, some input. From them before, you know, the planning board considers making a change. And then the. Oh, and then the, and the last one um, was, I think this was the last one. Uh, the last one was about the um, the existing conflict we have right now. Um, as, as we like to talk about, you know, we have to be careful of unintended consequences. And this was an unintended consequence from, it was either last year or the year before. Where we now have, you know, an applicant is required if they wanna um, build a duplex in town. And the um, it's in the groundwater um, uh, district. Most properties are in at least area three, which is our least restrictive, but still, the by law requires today. That that applicant would need to go to both the planning board and the zoning board of appeals, not only for a special permit. But because our, the way our site plan by law is written, they have to go to both boards for site plan approval. So obviously, it's a duplication of, of efforts. Um, and it, it has not happened in the past, but, you know, they're, they're again, an unintended consequence, you know, there could be. Um, a, a time when one board says, you know, yeah, we think this is a great idea, we approve your site plan. And then they go to the next board and they, then the board says, no, we, we, we don't wanna grant a special permit. Therefore, we're not gonna grant the site plan and, you know, now what does the applicant do? So um, Carrie, you and, you in particular, you came up with, with language. Um, I went through a- a- about how to fix that, um, and it's, and it's a change to the groundwater. Um, by law and then I went through the rest of the zoning by law. Um, checking to see if we needed to put, uh, to make a change anyplace else. And um, and right now, my conclusion is, is that the, that the only change that needs to happen is in the groundwater by law and. A- and um, where we talk about, that right now, it talks about the um, industrial districts. Anything in the industrial district and wireless communication facilities, that those special permits go to the planning board. And then, you know, the language was proposed that, you know, we just add in two family dwelling units and that takes care of it. So that, oh, and then um, just very quickly internally, there, there's a, and every year we've, we. Like, you know, we'll talk about this in May and then we forget about it in, uh, you know. Uh, January, February, when we're making uh, proposals for zone changes. Um, in the groundwater by law, and, and this has nothing to do with a, a use or, i- it's, it's just clarifying language. Right now, um, in this, in the same section, actually, um, about the two families. Or where we would add the two families, there is a, a sentence that reads. And this is about how the groundwater advisory committee um, interacts with the special permit granting authority. So it doesn't matter whether it's the planning board or the ZBA, but whoever is the special permit granting authority. So right now, the by law reads that prior to the public hearing, and that public hearing is of the special permit granting authority board. So prior to the public hearing. Uh, uh, I mean, excuse me, it, it reads right now that, that it says within twenty-one days following the public hearing. That the groundwater advisory committee would make their report to the SPGA. And that makes absolutely no sense because the public hearing is, would be done and over with. Um, and then, and then the groundwater advisory committee, you know, would make their comments. So, so uh, we, we've been talking about this and we need to change that to saying. Prior to the public hearing, the groundwater advisory committee will report, you know, to the special permit granting authority. That's how it's been done since nineteen eighty-six. I do, I don't know when, how this language was. Um, this particular sentence was in the by law. Um, but it's just, it's just one of those things that, um, I mean, we, you know, to me, I consider this housekeeping. But again, if anyone, you know, this is riveting. So if anyone, you know, reads it, um, it reads right now that it's twenty-one days following the public hearing. The groundwater committee makes their report and, and again, there would be no benefit to that. And, and the process we have set up is that, just like with the design review, you know, the applicant meets. You know, prior to the hearing and then they make their recommendation, you know, to, to whichever board. So we just want the language to reflect that. And then in general, and I know I've talked way too long, but um, in general, and, you know, and we've, we've said this before. We think that a lot of these changes that, that are being proposed this year are, are changes that need to. Really be um, e- explored by um, by a, by a larger audience. And, and that wh- what we're recommending is that, you know, as part of the master plan implementation committee, obviously. Um, you know, they're, they're going to be um, recommending which, you know, which sections of the, of the master plan move forward first and. Um, and part of that whole process, you know, should be based on suggestions in the master plan. You know, how do they, how do they um, fold into our zoning? And, and then how do we take, you know, we need to take a look at our zoning by law. And um, and the, the, the process that we used with a community development plan. Which was, we all refer to it as a mini master plan, you know, once that plan was done. You know, we then took it and implemented that plan. And part of that implementation was, you know, a couple of years later, we started a zoning subcommittee. Um, you know, the planning board wanted to implement, you know, some of the suggestions that were made in the community development plan. So what was created was a zoning subcommittee and I, a- again, I don't remember specifically that far back, but. You know, I think there was probably about ten or, you know, fifteen people on that subcommittee. And, and it took two years to, to talk about zoning changes. So we, you know, again, just in general, think that, that a lot of these, you know, changes that are being. Um, di- discussed with the planning board right now. You know, b- belong on that type of scale is that, is that we need to, um, you know, talk to the businesses, talk to residents. Um, you know, get some feedback on this on, you know, I, I know there's been. You know, a lot of discussion recently um, by some people about, you know, the uh, the contractors' yards and. Um, whether they agree or disagree and where should they go, where, you know, do we, do we need them in town? Um, but I think, you know, I think something like that, again, needs to be vetted out with not only the residents, but with the businesses. And the property owners in particular, um, as to, you know, how that may affect them or not affect them. And that's just one use. I'm, I'm just using that as an example because that just has been the topic of, you know, much discussion lately. So I don't know if Bob or Fred has anything, but.
I was just gonna ask about duplexes. Did we take that off the table? Anthony, did you withdraw?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, that, no, um, thank you, Carrie, I just, I. I completely um, I, I just, I missed that.
Oh, okay, that's okay.
I, so that, so that, that change was um, was um, Anthony had um. Suggested that duplexes be removed from the residential C district. And um, and that they now become a prohibited use. Um, and um. We, a- a- when, when we talked about that in-house, um, we saw. We s- we, we saw some concerns, um, we didn't really come down on yes or no that that, you know. That we would, that we as staff recommend it happening or not happening. But the conversation at the last meeting was about, um, at the last planning board meeting focused on. Whether or not it should be conversions allowed, not allowed, teardowns allowed, not allowed. So we wanted to get some more clarification, cause I know that wasn't a unanimous, you know, opinion. I, I mean, I don't know if any of these are unanimous at this point, but, you know, uh, cause I know it's all just in discussion mode. Um, but I know that there was some questions at the last meeting about. Um, you know, whether, whether conversions should be allowed and, and then limited to the same size footprint that. You know, that would, of the building that was being demolished. So again, I don't know if Fred or Bob have anything else to add. I've talked quite a bit.
Okay, so um, board members for. Let's see, maybe we go back and just figure out what would the action we wanna take for each one? what would the action we want to take for each one now that we have input from staff, how we want to proceed with our part in it. So each of us had previously either written or mostly written what would be included in the bylaw. So maybe it would make sense for whoever had been the advocate of it to speak to, you know, how that works with the next step for that particular bylaw. So the, was that you, Amy, the commercial industrial districts? Maybe we'll just start at the top, take it from the top.
Yep. So that was um, so they agreed to go along with that. So I guess I would hope that the planning board would be interested in agreeing to bring it in front of town meeting. I did some more research on it over the last two weeks too, and commercial storage facilities pretty much are warehouses. And um, according to community development plan, you know, our downtown business areas or our business west area even isn't the place for a big warehouse and trucking. And, and actually, after listening to the traffic study, the commercial storage facility called Storage is one of those high-density cubes. So I don't know, I just think it's, yeah, the right place for those would be an industrial one. So I just didn't know how the rest of the board felt, if they wanted to go along with prohibiting it in Business West. It's already not allowed in Business East and downtown business, but it's allowed in industrial and business south. This is pretty much just taking off Main Street. And staff seemed to be okay with it. So how does everybody else think? What does everybody else think?
I mean, I think I'm in agreement with that. I don't, I don't think there's a huge negative to um, writing it that way.
I'm okay with it.
I'm good with it.
Okay. So.
Okay. So is non, this is you as well, non-conforming.
Yeah, I'm gonna do that one last. It's always the trickiest.
Okay.
Contractors, yeah. I'll go to the prohibited uses.
Okay.
And I guess they want us to talk about it with the ZBA. And I do have a list, I can try to bring it out, of ideas for prohibited uses. And.
Oh, do you want me to stop, Carrie?
Sure.
Okay.
Let me just find it. Okay. So I'm gonna share. I don't see the share screen. I think I have to move this. Okay, share screen. I have too many things open. Okay, here we go. All right. Do you see this? Is it on your full screen or, there we go. No, I still feel I'd like to bring it forward to town meeting this year. I was trying to make a, some sort of meet in the middle and not do use variance and then just have a list of prohibited uses. And I don't think these are any that even staff would really want in town, like a slaughtering house or a glue plant, fertilizer manufacturer. I mean, I don't see the harm in prohibiting these because we know that people can come in front of the board and ask for anything. And, and there are some parcels for sale that could house something like this, so. I don't know. I just thought, why not bring it to town meeting? And, and have some prohibited uses. But we can go down them one by one, or if people want to wait till after the master plan. I just think the master plan implementation process will take a long time. And during that time, if one of these comes up, like a asphalt plant, I mean, we're gonna have another neighborhood banging down our doors saying, what did the planning board do and why are they allowing this? Because I can't think of anybody who wants to live next door to an asphalt plant.
So are you um, taking off the table the use variance and, and as an alternate suggesting we nail down prohibited uses?
I mean, I was unless somebody feels like, I mean, I don't mind bringing the use variance forward, but we could discuss that under the master plan, especially when it comes down to like downtown revitalization. I have, I took a class and I can share the packets. And, and they did say to get rid of the use variance and other loopholes, or else you'll never meet your goals because anybody can ask for anything. And actually, that came up in a couple of the minutes I was reading, that, I mean, actually, even it, well, if it's fully prohibited, I don't think they can ask for use variance, but I guess that would be a question for Kathy, Bob, or Fred. Say we have a asphalt plant is specifically prohibited. That means there should be no use variance. That's what they add. Okay. Just like the marijuana that we have right now, it says no use variance. So all these items would say no use variance, so they could not overrule our zoning. I just.
If I can give you some background on, on a list of prohibited uses?
Yep.
The zoning bylaw used to have a section like this that, that contained um, a, a list of prohibited uses. A lot of these uses were on this. This is a very common list that, that older zoning bylaws have. I'm not, I, I'm not saying it's right or wrong that some towns, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna make judgment on someone else's, another town zoning bylaw, but we, we used to have it in, in Northborough's zoning bylaw. And um, again, going, going through a two-year comprehensive um, process in looking at everything in the zoning bylaw, it was determined that, that this was a really antiquated way of talking about what's allowed or not allowed in your town. And, and instead, in the use table, as it reads today, is if it's not in the use table, if it's not a specific use listed in the use table, then it's a, then it's a prohibited use. So um, and that way, you avoid um, of, that you have, you avoid mistakenly missing something that you, that you might want to put on this list. So instead of thinking of every single thing that possibly you might want to prohibit in your town, you just generally say that if it's not in the use table, then it's prohibited. And so that's how the, the, the use table was changed in Northborough, and that's how it reads today.
That hasn't worked.
Well, it, 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 it all depends on, on, I, I mean, everyone has an opinion about that, Amy. I mean, that this town, and I, you know, it doesn't make any difference to us as staff. Again, I mean, we repeatedly say this. It's not, it's not, you know, these regulations aren't what we want or don't want. It's, you know, you, you have the, you know, the town adopts these regulations and then we as staff have to, you know, go about enforcing them and educating people on them. So Northborough is one of the towns that allows use variances. So if someone goes to the zoning board of appeals and presents their case, I mean, you personally may agree or disagree with that, but I mean, that's the process. You know, that's, that's the fair process through Massachusetts general law and through, through Northborough zoning bylaw, is that, you know, that this particular town allows use variances, along with dimensional variances. So, you know, that's how, you know, in, you know, in your opinion, you, you, you think it doesn't work. I mean, of course, other people will, you know, who are the recipients of variances will say it does work. But anyways, that's, you know, a, a, again, that, that's the history of how the use tables here are in Northborough. So we used to have prohibited uses and then um, it was changed and adopted to, to get rid of this laundry list and instead to, to make it, you know, say in the use table, that if it's not listed in the use table, then it's prohibited use.
Amy, you're. I just want to finish, but I don't, I don't, I'm not trying to insult anybody or insulting the town or staff or anything. But, but in our last minutes, when I was reading or watching the video, even talking December 1st, we talked about how Bob said that when applicants come to me, I have to find a use and pigeonhole it in and find where it goes. And there are even uses I emailed, like, well, say a car or truck rental. We don't have that in our zoning bylaws, but what would that fall under, you know? So I, it seems like even though our bylaws say if not permitted, then prohibited, you can't account for everything. So a lot of the uses that people might think are prohibited end up in different neighborhoods or not neighborhoods or on different building zones. Because, I mean, what would you think that a car rental facility would fall under? I mean, I've, I would have guessed it would fall under the auto uses and they're not listed under auto uses, so I would think they're prohibited. But when I asked Bob, and I'm not picking on Bob at all, and I just, but he said that would be retail. And I wouldn't think a car rental would be retail, so. And car rentals aren't listed on our zoning bylaw or on the use table. So, I mean, if you read asphalt plant, someone could read that and say, that's light industrial. So that's allowed in industrial, even though it's not listed in our use table. Someone who applies for an asphalt plant can say, well, that's light manufacturing. So it's very.
If anybody ever came to me and said an asphalt plant is light industrial, ask them what he's smoking.
I know.
That's heavy industrial, unreasonable.
I'm not trying to pick on anyone. I'm just trying to say that if not permitted, then prohibited is, is vague.
Okay, so either, or else it goes back to the use variance. So this was your midway point, so as to not just completely eliminate. Okay, are there any board thoughts on this in general?
I mean, I, I do think that having a use variance does open itself up to a lot of, of um, issues with general definitions of things like light manufacturing or contractors' yards or kennel use or things like that. So those, you know, to try to find a place to put those things when they come through can be tricky. They're not prohibited, but they're not specifically designated to go anywhere. So I do think that this is, is worth looking into.
Other thoughts?
I, I for one would be interested in pursuing this direction in terms of prohibited uses. The only thing I'd want to kind of take a little bit more time is, is defining this list. Make sure we've got everything we want here and then make sure that there's things here that we would not want on here. But I, I think it um, it takes out um, first, I, first, I think it's gonna save staff and the town a lot of time from cycles of processing things where it's, if it's clearly defined whether it is prohibited or not. And um, I think this might be a good direction for, for the town.
I mean, I've heard many times that towns are getting rid of use variances and more, the fewer have them, fewer allow them than a lot than, I, I'm missing that statement completely. Start over. More towns are getting rid of them than not. We still have ours. Ideally, I think we should at some point consider that, but I, as I said before, I think that that takes a little more lead time and different groups to think about and think about impact and consequence. And maybe that comes down to, like Amy, you said, master plan implementation as well. So if we're having trouble with things happening that we don't anticipate, I mean, otherwise, we're never gonna be able to, we're always gonna be a step behind. So we realize, oh, wait, we didn't mean that. But now it's in the, you know, going through the process and the applicant, the neighbors are upset and the applicant's spending all this money and we're always in this constant catch-up mode. Maybe there is a defined list of things we know we don't want, so let's not make anybody waste their time. I don't know. I'd be interested in, see, I don't want to make the list too long or put, you know, there was someone here that we didn't want to include, I think, towards the end. But at least being in agreement what we don't want, so that we don't end up, you know, chasing bylaws just one after the other as we catch them, you know? It seems, I don't know, I get, I hear what Kathy's saying, that we've done it before and we switched it. Something is causing this continuous, um, you know, it seems like we, last year especially, or maybe the year before, it's just one after the other. We just kept getting that um, stalemate over the bylaws. So I don't know, maybe this is a good way to approach it.
And the two towns that I found the same list in actually just redid their bylaws, like they did a whole zoning recodification. So they didn't come from old bylaws. And maybe they were old, but maybe these two towns too said, you know what, maybe we just better protect ourselves. And, and I'm sure we won't catch everything, but if there's anything, maybe at the next meeting, we can go down the list or if someone has something to add or something to delete.
I, I would recommend if you're gonna go this route, that you stay, pay very close attention and put in um, really well-written definitions of what each of these uses are and limits in terms of, like you said, item P. How do you just, how do you qualify an offensive noise? How do you qualify an offensive smoke? Those will need to be qualified because if you leave them variable, it's gonna be no different than, than, than what you have now. Okay, because what you're trying to do is take all the judgment out of everything, including the ZBA. And what, if you're gonna go this route and be that tight with things, you better be able to um, have a clear definition and clear performance standards and how they're gonna be measured and how they're gonna be fined and enforced and some, you guys to write it.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, please do.
So some of them are, are pretty evident about why they would be on the list. I think others get into a very gray area.
Yeah.
So I would just recommend to the board that maybe they stay in the, in the area of where everything is, seems to be pretty black and white, like, yeah, you don't want an asphalt plant, but you do want landscaping businesses. Yeah, you probably don't want, you know, a um, a concrete batch plant, but you do want a contractor shop, right? Because we talked about maybe modernizing the language of what's contractor yard or shop is to today's standards of, for tradesmen, plumbers, electricians, things like that. When you look at vehicle storage yard, I think you want to look at, um, is this going to affect the car dealerships on Route 9 who store some of their additional vehicles up on some of the industrial areas? I mean, is that an unintended consequences that were affecting their business? You do have a section that Northborough owns that's on 290 and Route 9 is a billboard so bad? I don't know. It's on a major highway. You know, so there are some things in here that I think are what I, and are gray areas and then some that are like, yeah, that makes sense. You probably don't want a commercial slaughtering house in your town. If you're looking at doing something where staff has already said, oh, I don't really think this is a great idea, but you're saying, let's give it a shot and let's build upon it, then I would start with things that are very specific that you know will not have any unintended consequences. And then maybe those gray areas you address next year. Because you already know that you're going to run into problems if you put landscaping businesses down here or contractors down here.
One of the things that I can do for um, um, hopefully the next meeting is, you know, and, and before, when, when, when some of the bylaws have been considered as far as changing what is, you know, allowed or not allowed for the ZBA's um, authority, is we've looked at, um, you know, just what, what has the ZBA issued in the past? So, you know, how many use variances have they issued, you know, in the past five years? You know, so I mean, that's the kind of information that you should want to have, you know? So is it, is it a problem? Maybe it is, you know, I, I don't know if it is, but that's one of the things that I can take a look at is, I mean, if that's information that you would like, which I think would be helpful, is you know, have they issued use variances um, recently and, and what have they been issued for? The other thing, um, oh, and I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, one, one of the things that um, sometimes when staff recommend. sometimes when staff recommends zoning bylaw changes is, you know, we look at has there been a pattern of something that has been granted by the zoning board of appeals? So therefore, if it's something that, you know, either residents are continually seeking a variance for, or, you know, commercial property owners are continually seeking a variance from and being granted it, you know, whether it's a resident or a, a business owner. Um, then that's, that's something that you should look at of like, well, geez, you know what? You, you know, every, every year, six people are applying for this and, and every year they get granted. So, you know, we should take a look at that particular, you know, bylaw. So be, um, you know, that, that, that's something that I, I, I don't, just in a, in a two week time, I don't know how thorough I can be, but certainly with the use variances, that's, that's easier than taking a look at. Like say maybe dimensional variances, but, but let me at least give you use variance information.
Okay, that sounds good. Why don't we, it's already nine, so I want to make sure we cover all of them. So it sounds like we want to continue down this road to take a look at this one. So Amy, I'm going to have you stop sharing. So we can go down to the next one.
Okay. Let's see. So should I share the next one?
Um, no, I was just going to go back to the memo to go down the list.
Okay. I was gonna talk about craft brewery, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, do you have stuff to share? I'm sorry. Is that what you meant?
Um, well, I might on some, but with craft brewery, I did want to talk about it. Um, I don't know if that's something hopefully we could get in this year. I'm still hoping. But I understand all the different like tea rooms, coffee rooms, and I think those are great. But I'm wondering if they're different than like the towns I looked at. The brewery, distillery, winery was different than an artisan, which we could add to. But I don't know if they would fall in the same category without getting too confusing. Like, I guess what I was picturing, and then everybody can tell me what they were picturing, but if we have some warehouses in industrial zones that would like to be reused, that's what I see being used as the brewery, distillery, winery. Because they do have the big kegs and they need the big space. And then they do have a little tasting room in the front or even have a little outside sitting area like treehouse. So that's what I was thinking. Like when I looked at the ones that I shared, they had the brew pubs, which were on like the main commercial areas and those were the ones that had food and beer. And then they had the brewery distilleries, which were the ones that were in the industrial zones. So I just didn't know how hard it would be to do. And I know Bob said he has to check on water and stuff. I was just trying to think of a reuse because we talk about reuse in the master plan. And I know they've been popular in a lot of towns.
Okay, any thoughts on this one?
I mean, I, I have gone to, um, on this, this road trip of quite a few of the breweries and distilleries, and they're definitely in the warehouse area. A lot of them do have also, they offer things like tours. Um, and they do off, offer either food trucks or some of their own foods, like Kathy was mentioning, that some of them expand into more of a, uh, you know, an artisanal food option as well.
And I know with COVID, I went to the new brewery that was in Lancaster. And I think because of the COVID rules, they had to serve food with the beer. That was like rule, because you can't have a bar.
Right.
So. I don't know. I just, I saw a whole bunch of towns where they had a brew pub and a distill, distillery. And the distilleries were in industrial and the brew pubs were more of a restaurant on Lake Main Street. And I think those were included in the, um, in the word document I had. And maybe we could talk to a different town that's doing it. Like Framingham did it and Marlboro's been doing a lot of them.
Well, I, you know, crafting the bylaw, um, i- isn't the, the issue because I mean, again, that, you know, there, there are a lot of towns that are doing this. So we just wanted to get a little bit more direction of, you know, if you wanted to, um, and which is fine, you know, if you wanted to keep it towards more of the, um, uh, you know, the, the brewery, you know, distillery, you know, versus the, you know, making it m- more broad, you know, to include other kinds of, um, you know, like we said, you know, just name your food product, you know, cheese, barbecue sauce, maple syrup. But so, um, so I mean, if that's something that the board, you know, wants to pursue as far as the, the brewery, you know, we can certainly do that.
I don't mind opening up, but I just don't know if it makes it too confusing. Like I know the farmer's market, like you were talking about the maple syrups and stuff, a lot of those people sell their products at Davidian. And, and places like that. So I don't know if that will confuse the brew pub distillery. Now, I'm not, I'm not trying to pigeonhole the brewery into one thing, but I just don't know if it'd be hard to craft a bylaw that it would include it all. Unless you can think of a way to do it.
Yeah, I guess that is the, the issue. If it's easy to do, that's great. But if we need to crawl before we walk, I'm, I'm okay just focusing on a smaller piece.
Cause we have specialties and they seem to, they sell tea and food, right? But they've never been denied or and there's Armino's coffee, but they don't serve food, I don't think.
No, I mean, like, you know, specialties is just, I mean, it's a restaurant, you know, they're not, they're not producing tea. They're not growing tea, you know? I mean, that's, that's not that, that, that's a, a restaurant.
Yeah. Yeah. So I guess if you can do more than beer and wine, but I just don't want to confuse it. Cause I think it seems like alcohol has a lot of, it talks about pouring licenses and also just stuff like that, that I don't think would be in the same definition as someone who is selling cheeses.
Well, Millie, this is your world. What are your thoughts?
It sure is. I, I mean, honestly, I, I, I think it's worth looking into again to see the, the distillery option, the brewery option or a cidery or, or something like that, but also you know, they do have tasting, oftentimes these places do have tastings. They do have tours that go through these places. Um, you know, is there a, a need to expand it into something that is bigger? I don't, I don't know, but, but I think it's worth looking into.
Could be a good use for weight lifts.
Kathy, what kind of direction exactly do you need? You've, we haven't really given an answer to, I guess, to what you're looking for. You're asking, do we just want a brewery or do we want to, you know, make it all encompassing? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. And I, I mean, I think what, what I'm hearing is that, you know, we'll, we'll stick with the, um, with the alcohol. For, for, to start with. Is that fair? I mean, is that, is that what people are thinking? That, that, that's what the bylaw will concentrate on. It'll be, you know, as, as Amy, you know, had presented the idea about, you know, distilleries, you know, brew pubs, that type of thing.
Carrie, one of the other things we talked about when we were discussing this was that some breweries, um, come along with a significant amount of traffic. Specifically, the brewery out in Charlton has caused quite a stir on Route twenty, even though it's a state highway. They have, uh, fairly long lines, traffic congestion, irritated businesses around there for people turning around and stuff. So it's it's more complicated than just saying, oh, we should have a craft brewery, much as I like a cold beer as much as the next guy. I think it's a, it's something else to be concerned about besides the utilities.
Okay. Well, that's interesting. Is this something we want to start with and then, you know, we'll obviously have hearings and we'll have, that's a great point about traffic. We'll have to figure out. You know, where are we, are we zoning this only industrial? Was that our thought? Cause that's our big traffic area right now.
Right. I was thinking industrial. But it could be anywhere. It could be the barefoot road area. It could be. I think Bartlett Street is full, right? Almost everything. I mean, there's a couple buildings, maybe.
All right. Well, it sounds like members flagging the traffic piece and also the water piece. Are, are board members wanting to at least start with the brewery and distillery component?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we'll have to think about zoning where that really belongs. I mean, the, the size, you're saying warehouses for the size.
Yeah. I mean, and, and there are some places even in Business West that could have but.
Okay. And for the ones that were, uh, you know, that we want to pursue, what are we, you know, going back to, what was the, what is the next step, Kathy? Is that, do you want? To keep this moving along? What would the next right step be?
Yeah. Well, I mean, so far, um, I mean, the commercial storage facility, you know, that's, that's a easy one. I, I don't know where you landed really on use variances and prohibited uses uh, other than, you know, I'm going to provide you some information on past, um, you know, like within the last five years or so. Um, and then, and then the craft brewery, you know, I'll, I'll work on, um, putting together a, a bylaw language.
Okay. All right. So then I'm just going to try to move through these and then we'll swing back around to the top. So accessory dwelling unit. This makes sense to me. It does sound like the bill is not finalized yet and it does sound like a variance could solve, a dimensional variance could solve this problem if there is one. And so far it sounds like I've presented a problem that may not exist. So there's no need to rush to solve for it. And I agree with the, um, issue about verifying age and relationship. And then even if you do that the first time, you're always going to have to keep track of it. And it's, at this point, it sounds like, um, it would be difficult and, and cumbersome. But the one thing I do want to ask about is the special permit in RA and RB. So if you were in RA or RB, you would need a special permit and a variance. So I, I guess I don't understand why there is a special permit for RA and RB. And should there be, do we need one? Can, if someone, then you wouldn't have to go through all these hoops to, if you were to want to put some sort of a, um, ADU. Do we know why we have that?
The, um, I think it was all part of the, um, and I can't say for sure, Carrie, but I think it was all part of the discussion. In the, in the residence and, and Michelle might have some memory on this too, but in the, the residential A and the residential B, that given that they're larger lots and, um, and a lot of, especially in residential A are these, you know, pork chop lots where they're, you know, very oversized. Sort of almost, you know, little mini estates on their own. That, that, um, that people just felt at the time when we were doing the zoning proposals that with both, um, duplexes and the accessory dwelling units, that it, it's just not something that, um, you know, I, I think people expected on the larger lots, but I, I, I honestly can't you know, remember that it was like, you know, significantly compelling. Um, I think it was more of with, especially with the accessory dwelling units. It was more of a way to introduce the concept of the zoning and, um, and let's see if it did work. And then, you know, perhaps go back and, and look at, you know, does it make sense in other zoning districts? So, uh, you know, again, I don't remember something that was like so overwhelming of like, oh my God, we could never have those in other residential districts. But, um, but I do remember with the accessory dwelling units, it was talking about, let's introduce the idea. Um, let's see if it works. And, um, you know, and then are there things that we need to change or tweak? Um, so that, that's how that one specifically landed in, in residential C and, and some of the other district, the smaller districts.
Okay. How does the board feel about opening up RA and RB for accessory dwelling unit by right? Not having a special permit. So that way if you need a variance, you don't have to do both. Or is that worth pursuing? I guess we don't have to, I don't want to decide without having our information, but is that worth pursuing?
I mean, I think there were two that came in front of the ZBA at two meetings I was at. And I think they were in RA or RB, but I don't, uh, maybe when Kathy is going through the experiences, I don't know if you'll see the accessory dwelling ones at the same time, to see what they were asking for. I mean, to me, it doesn't seem like it'd be a big deal to allow them in RA and RB. I know, Michelle, what do you think, being a Realtor?
Oh, right, Michelle.
I mean, I think the, I'm not quite sure. I don't remember why Kathy, we didn't include it in RA and RB. Back when we were doing the rezoning. I think it was so new and such a new concept. But at the time, we thought the use would more be for people who are in small lots and looking to expand. So I'm okay with it. I mean, I don't think there's going to be an issue with it. I mean, certainly you, we could ask, um, as Amy said, if there's been two applicants that have come before for, is it, did you say it was RA or RB, Amy?
I can't remember, but I do think it was for a special permit for those zones, but I, I can't remember. Or maybe it was a variance for a bigger size.
Yeah. I mean, when, when we talked to the ZBA, we could ask them why. And I mean, it doesn't, it seems like something that we're trying to, it's a form of housing that we're actually trying to promote. So to me, it doesn't seem like a bad thing. I'm not, you know, I don't see it as a
Yeah.
A negative.
Okay. So how about we, can we, do we, do we wish to pursue it? And then we can always tweak it or if we come up, if somebody thinks of a problem or something.
Yeah. I'd like, I guess I'd like to know what might be the downside or the unintended consequences.
I mean, I think the issue is that some of these larger lots, the houses are, you know, three thousand square feet or four thousand square feet. And they don't need the additional space. They have it. Where some of the other ones might be smaller, they're eighteen hundred and they need that extra square footage to add on that in-law suite or whatever they're looking for. So maybe that was the mindset when we were talking about it years ago. I mean, remember this was, we're talking about this eleven years ago.
Okay. All right. But it sounds like we're okay with at least not pursuing the entire originally proposed by law, but at least taking a look at that use table and seeing if it makes sense to make that by right for RA and RB.
I think one of the only concerns what people had when I first started on the planning board, I think there were concerns about, um, Airbnbs, right? We never followed it up because I guess we're not a hopping town with a big Airbnb rental. I wonder if we get that big brewery, we might be. Just kidding.
Okay. Um, all right. So for this one, so I see the point here. My only concern, the problem I was trying to solve for is that it's very confusing to everybody. And there's, there seems to be like a pick a path thing where one person's up for one thing and one person doesn't have to do another thing. So I just want to read this again. Um, before we make a decision on moving forward or not. So I, I want to follow along with what staff is saying here. Um, I, I understand what they're saying, but I kind of want to follow it along and, and just think about it a little bit. So if you guys don't mind holding on this one, I just, I'd like the chance to just think through what I'm trying to solve for and to see if this is actually the problem I think it is or not. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, and then if we do anything for groundwater, um, timing wise, I, I mean, I'm not opposed to, to it, maybe it's something that comes in the form of a memo or Amy, you was our representative can shuttle back and forth. I don't know if we can do an actual, have time for an actual meeting to sit, it may not take that long or timing wise, it may not work out. But it's one way or another, I think it, I do think it's good to get feedback from groundwater. This sounds like it was okay, the duplication of efforts. Uh, this looks okay to me. Any comments on this? Does it look okay to move forward?
Yes, I'm trying to figure it out. So it will. So if there's a special permit, so if it's a duplex on groundwater, it'll go to the groundwater. It'll go to the groundwater advisory committee? And then does it come to the planning board because we grant the special permit for?
Unrelated, this is an unrelated change, right? This is while we're here, so this is unrelated, Amy. Yeah, this is the first part, which is basically just. It's added language into the, that section where it says who's doing what, and it just adds, the planning board will do the special permit for. If it's a duplex involved.
For groundwater.
Yep.
Okay, I guess that's what I was just trying to figure out.
And this is number, part two is a different change that I think it sounds like Kathy and Bob noticed while we were in this section.
Okay.
Does this sound good to move forward with?
Sure, I guess I'll have to read it offline because I'm a little confused, but I think I get it.
Okay, and then, um. Anthony, you have the duplex one, it sounds like staff's recommendation. Now I'm forgetting it, it's not written down.
I forgot too.
We were, we were just, um. We, we didn't come up with a, um, you know, we, um, a recommendation about a yes or a no, but, um. And I do again apologize that I forgot to put that in there, Anthony, because we did talk about it. But it was more of a, um. You know, there was a conversation at the last meeting about conversions, you know, should, 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 um. Duplexes, n- not necessarily, I think the conversation was that not. Um, a, a brand new, new, uh. On a vacant lot, a new duplex would be prohibited, but if someone wanted to convert. Their single family home into a duplex using the same footprint, that was. That was, some of the board members were saying that was okay to consider.
Well, yeah, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I, I, I think for me, and what I believe is that. The, the intent here is to allow the homeowners to have some ability to, you know, if they wanted to do a conversion. That's fine, uh, my concern with the, the, mostly of all of RC, a lot of RC. It's just the footprint of the size of the building in comparison to what most of those houses look like today. So if it were a conversion, um, that it maintained the same footprint that it's in currently. Um, and that's, yes, that's, in terms of going forward, I still would like to pursue, um, to prohibit duplexes in RC. But allow conversions on the same footprint.
Can I make a comment? Okay, thanks. So, um, I understand the preservation of some of the neighborhoods where. A lot of this may have started like a Pine Haven or, um. Uh, I mean, really it's not happened in Northgate, it was on, I was on Route one thirty-five. Um, I will say to the board that, um, I think you have to step back a little bit and look at. Are you allowing new construction to happen in your community? Okay, that's the first thing. And when you're allowing, if you're allowing new construction, that means. You know, new foundation, new, new tear down, your new construction. If the only thing you're allowing is a single family house. Then your price point is immediately into the seven fifty, nine hundred range. So although we've already talked about, um, duplexes. You know, who would think like a half a million is affordable? It's more affordable than an eight hundred thousand dollar house. But what you have to look at is, is the board, when you start to limit cluster housing or. Any type of density housing, are you eliminating any new construction in Northborough? I mean, think about any type of new construction happening, it is just not happening. So you have to wonder, is something like this, now, I understand protecting the neighborhoods. I agree with what Bob Federico said, uh, I think it was either Bob or Fred said. Last week, which was the land values have increased so significantly. And they're not coming down, and there's probably no sign that they're going to come down because there's such. A shortage of new construction. That what's happening is in Northgate, even at a tier down, is at three twenty-five, three fifty. You're talking about seven, a, a developer has to take to get a hundred and fifty feet of frontage because. The majority of Northgate is one hundred, one hundred feet of frontage, and the majority of the houses in town are one hundred feet of frontage. We've now said, okay, to protect the neighborhoods, like ma- make it one fifty. I guess the board consider like one seventy-five or two hundred, although that seems like a lot of frontage. Um, what I'm saying is, in a Northgate or even in a Pine Haven, which by the way. These nine hundred square foot ranches are now selling for four hundred thousand dollars. Now, let's say it's in bad shape, three fifty, get two of them together, like Anthony indicated might happen in a. In a Northgate area, that means the developer has to come in and pay seven hundred thousand dollars for the, the houses. Probably another hundred to tear them down and get all, everything set up to go, and then build them, which costs you about. Five hundred thousand, and his profits just aren't there, they're just not going to do it. I think what you're going to find is, is that there's pockets of raw land throughout town. That maybe someone wants an opportunity, and you've already covered yourself in that. Because you've already says it has to go with the character of the neighborhood. So I think what you want to look at as a board is. Are our messages going that we don't want new construction? Because you don't have a lot of land left. And so if you're saying we only want new construction, is it for only these big? Colonials that are going to go for a price point of eight to nine hundred thousand? So that's one message you have to think, and then when we talked about this before, because I know I was part of this discussion. And, and I voted for it, we talked about basically the whole intent of duplexes was preservation. Right? It started with what's happening to Pine Haven and what's happening to Northgate. And that was like three or four years ago, and then all of a sudden the market took off. Because there is no statewide, there's just not a lot of new construction going on. Or it's limited new construction because land value is so expensive, right? I mean, you should just have developers come in and talk to you about it, right? That's what's happening, and that's why it's attractive to a developer, for a developer to do. A duplex because the land value, that's why they're doing that. So I understand the preservation, and that's why we added a hundred and fifty, um, frontage. If you go through Northgate and if you go through Pine Haven, they all have a hundred, not many people have a hundred and fifty. So we went up to a hundred and fifty, and then to make it even more protect the neighborhoods. We then said it has to go along with the character. Right? And so you have already things in place. I would just say to, if the board is going to consider this, is a couple of things. You have to consider allowing it for conversions because that's the way you save your, your two family houses. That's what people who once had two family houses in the nineteen hundreds, nineteen twenties and nineteen forties. Converted them to single families and now want to convert them back to two families. It's what every town east of here is doing, and it's how they're preserving these two families, so that's. Something that I would not vote in favor of this unless we did the preservation of the two family houses. And then the other thing is, you have these pockets of raw land that are within the community. I'm not quite sure why you wouldn't want to allow that to, you know, allow the ability. For what we're calling, and I know you're, you're shocked that a half a million dollars is affordable. But it is affordable compared to eight hundred or nine hundred thousand. Keeping in mind that most ranches now and capes, and these two significant neighborhoods that you guys keep on bringing up. Are well over four hundred thousand. So, I, I mean, I think you just have to sort of look at the bigger picture. And look at, are we as a board prohibiting new construction? Now, what's going to happen is, if you're prohibiting new construction, they're just going to tear down and build up a house. And you don't have to go to too many towns east of you to see neighborhoods consistently change. And to think that Pine Haven's not going to change, most of those people who went into Pine Haven and bought their houses at two hundred and gained all their equity. They're just going to build up, you're going to see these neighborhoods building up. And then you're going to see them go into the ZBA asking for variances to build out. Because that's what happens with these older neighborhoods that were built in the fifties and sixties. So I just feel like we already talked about the, the, the frontage. And about complying with the neighborhood, I don't know why you would want to eliminate it almost throughout the town. And by the way, no one's going to go out and build duplexes out in the outskirts of town because that land is even more expensive. So the numbers don't work, and I think it was Fred last week who talked to, or the last meeting talked about this.
So I think where my head is at is, I mean, we all know that the market is cyclical. Um, who knows where we're at in the current market, um, and, but there will be a time where it. I don't want to say correct, but it'll go back down again, and maybe that, those market dynamics will make it. Uh, more attractive, or maybe more, uh, capable of buying multiple, uh, lots and expanding, I. I don't know, and I, and I don't, and I think everybody, all the arguments that, that were made are valid in terms of, you're not going to see somebody buying. You know, multiple, um, houses and, and putting the lots together because it is too expensive and, and the. The math doesn't work, but I guess what I'm thinking is, let's get ahead of it. For when it, when the market does go the other direction, so we don't spend a year and a half or a year. Trying to, you know, waiting half to correct, uh, a problem, so. That's where my head is at, but.
Any other thoughts on this one?
I just don't want, and I'll go make this statement, this board coming out to look like we are anti-new construction. You are the planning board. And that's where subdivisions and new construction come before you, just as important as commercial and industrial.
Do we feel that the special permits we have in place protect us for now, for. For this period of time until we get a better sense of, like Anthony, to your point about the market? Is there, I mean, I, I wish timeline wise, you know, I, I know we expect a housing study at some point, I believe, out of. The master plan, but I just don't know when that's going to come, so to your point, Anthony, I don't always chase the problem. Is the special permit enough, or do you see it as a problem where we're going to be, you know, over. You know, until we do something about it?
Well, yeah, no, I think that, I think if there, and, and I could be completely wrong, and, and any and all of this, but if. If there is going to be a problem, it's going to be several years away, so. I'm being proactive, but I mean, if there's enough pushback from the board, I have no problem with, you know. Waiting another year or two or whatever it is.
Okay, those are two extremely different views, any other thoughts?
Carrie, can I just ask a, a question, because again, it, it always, at least for me, it always starts with. Is what, what is the, the issue with the problem, and then, you know, let's identify that, and then how do we fix it? So is the, is the issue, Anthony, I'm not picking on you, but is the issue? Does, the, the kind of housing, you know, that, that, that a two-family is. In a predominantly single-family neighborhood, or is it the scale? Of the new housing, because if it's the scale of the new housing and the use is okay. You know, as a, as a two-family, then, you know, that's can be managed through, um, setbacks and. A- a- and, and partly design, you know, standards or guidelines, but, you know, the. So I think if it's a, you know, are, are, are you, are people thinking that they're, that they're too big? And so, so we need to look at. You know, are, are you thinking it needs to be, be a bigger lot size in the residential C district?
No, I think, I think the intent here is, and this is why I said that. I, I feel conversions are absolutely fine as long as they're within a footprint that's similar with the rest of the neighborhood, and I think it has to do with symmetry in the neighborhoods. And I am, it's when you said scale, yeah, that's, I think, and I think a lot of people in, in town are concerned about this. Different entry, different scaling and we've got a bunch of similar sized houses, and then you have. Something that doesn't fit in to everything else in a neighborhood, and. And that's, this is where, you know, this is my motivation to pursue this. Um, whether it would be, I mean, I don't know what's going to happen in five years from now, and that's, I guess where I'm thinking of getting ahead of it.
I think if we're talking about conversions, you know, if the, um. Uh, if, if we're, if, if you, if you want to propose, you know, saying that a conversion is okay on the existing footprint. I mean, you might as well just say no duplexes in the RC, because. Nobody is going to build a duplex on a nine hundred square foot. Foundation, and then that makes the duplex four hundred and fifty, you know, one side of a duplex, four hundred and fifty square feet. I mean, that's a studio apartment, so. So by, by, by saying that they're okay by conversion, I mean, it's just. I mean, it, it's just not going to happen, I mean, it just, it, it just doesn't work, the numbers don't work and the. The real estate market just doesn't work, I mean, no developer is going to. Nor will no developer, developer build one, but no one's going to buy one. I mean, that, that's, you know, Fred just pointed out, I mean, that's smaller than an accessory dwelling unit. So, so it's not going to happen, so I don't even think you need to, to put something in about conversions. But if the, if, if it's about, you know, not having duplexes in the RC, I think you just need to say that.
Well, no, I, I mean, I think, and there has been instances where there were maybe much older houses. That were converting, and I, Michelle even said it, I believe, where you said that they converted from. Two families to singles and then later on wanted to convert them back, there's not a lot, but I, I, I'm just saying. At least allowing the homeowner to make that decision, should they have the, you know. You know, the, the footprint or the size of the house that they could do that in, obviously you're not going to take a nine hundred square foot house and. Make it into a two-family.
I think when we passed this bylaw a couple of years ago, was it two or three? We had it tied to design guidelines that we never followed through with, so I think for me. It's, maybe it's a scale thing, Kathy, when you brought up the problem, because there were instances that I think I saw Judy present where. It was very well hidden by, and Design Review does a great job, you know, going, you know, specking these things and making sure they look good. But we never had that book of Design Review Guidelines that we settled on, where, you know. It's sure enough, as soon as we passed the bylaw, I think we got a proposal for like. A couple giant, all the same standard looking white houses. But that wasn't really in the design guidelines that were developed at that time, we just hadn't approved them yet, so. We've almost been behind in getting like, what do we want it to look like? Again, the Design Review Committee does a great job making them look nice, but we, we never got that book. That we agreed on and wanted it to look like, and maybe in our minds, we're all picturing different things because we never came up with that standard. Look and feel, I don't know.
One, one of the things you may want to think about in terms of scale, I, I've heard that used a lot tonight. Is that, you know, a, a single family home in Northborough. Provided it meets the setbacks and height requirements can increase its size by eighty percent. Okay, without needing a variance or a special permit. Okay, so if you've got a small house on a small lot, and you wanted to expand it. And as long as you stayed within the setbacks and the height restrictions, um, you can. You, you can fill up, fill up the lot, and you can just about double the size of your, of your, of your house. And that's for a single family home. You know, so you, you have the potential of having a, uh, neighborhood that is pretty much. Homogeneous in terms of one house to the next, to the next, and then right in the middle of it is this house that's, you know, gone up a story. And gone out with a den on one side and a three-car garage on the other, and, you know, there, there goes your, you know, there goes the scale. You know, in comparison to the rest of the neighborhood, I just wanted to make you aware of that, um, because that is allowed by right.
When did that change? I'm just curious, because I did an addition, I can only go fifty percent.
I don't know when it changed, but as long as I've been here, which is, well, my first rodeo through here was seven years ago. Uh, it was, it was in effect then. So I don't know when it came before that.
Okay, well, we're getting late and we have a couple more to cover, and I want to make. Okay, well, we're getting late and we have a couple more to cover and I want to make sure we can get through this. What, what do we want to do with this one? Do we want to pursue it? Or do we want to table it? Any thoughts? Michelle, it sounds like you're not, you don't want to pursue. Did we lose Michelle?
No, I'm still here. I just think that we need to work on exactly what we're trying to do with it. Do you know what I mean? Like, I agree with, um, you know, preserving the houses. And I understand preserving the neighborhoods, but I don't think it should be completely throughout the whole RC district, which is a huge district in Northborough, if there's land available. I think the board needs to consider, you're a planning board. You know, are you becoming that you don't want new construction?
Anthony, do you want to still pursue?
I, I think, I think it's a valid um, assessment by Michelle that maybe it is too wide scope, maybe it needs some further thought and research. Um, I'm okay with tabling it. Um, and then, you know, looking at different options in the years to come.
Okay, Millie, your thoughts?
Yeah, I think, I think Michelle brought up some good points. Um, and I guess my, my question was originally, how often does this happen and how urgent is it to, to, to work on it um, for this session? And if we can take another look at it and see if we want to um, reword it or re-investigate, that I don't, I would not object to that.
Okay, Amy, thoughts?
Yeah, I think as planners, we do need to keep it on our radar. Because when we went through the master plan, the majority of the comments and concerns were high-density duplexes and so although I think it slowed down with COVID or building, but I definitely think it, it needs to stay on our radar because if it did, all of a sudden, I got nervous when I heard Michelle said it's going to go up and out. Like, I think that's when people moved here because they love the small-town community and they moved away from the towns in the east because they said of the traffic and the schools got crowded and, and, and I know we're near buildout and I know people love the small-town community feel. So if things started going up and out and it became an urbanization, urban town, I think a lot of people would be upset. So I think as planners, we'll keep our eye on the pulse of what's happening in town.
Yeah.
And, and then just keep an eye on it and see what happens.
Okay.
I just wanted to, if I could just clarify, what I wanted to say was in the neighborhoods like a Pine Haven or whatever, if they bought their house for two fifty and now they have all this equity built in it and they can't afford a colonial and they want to get beyond a ranch, that's what I mean, but they're going to go up and out. They're going to build up and they're going to build out as long as they meet what Fred, um, Bob was talking about within the guidelines.
Okay, I thought you meant like duplexes and high-density zoning and.
No, I think you're going to see the neighborhood significantly change because all of this equity is being built up and people are going to want to build and their houses are going to want to stay in the town. But they can't afford a nine hundred thousand dollar colonial.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
All right. So it sounds like we're okay tabling with it. I'm sorry, we're okay tabling it. It, it does sound like a bigger discussion and some different components of it to think about. Um, so we will table that one. Um, Amy, that leaves you back to non-conforming and contractors yard.
Yep. And they kind of, when I'm thinking about it and when I was listening to the last minutes on video, when we talked about contractors yard last time, they kind of go hand in hand. I guess my concern, and I'm not trying to say anything bad about Bob or anybody in staff. My concern was when I heard the minutes last week or two weeks ago, when they said, you know, the guy who sells cabinet on Main Street, he's a contractor's yard. And I guess if contractors yards end up being the definition for everything in the downtown, okay, that person who I would picture as retail sales because he's selling cabinets, all of a sudden is a contractor's yard. He leaves and next thing you know, we have a landscaping company with mulch and trucks there. I guess that's one of my concerns. And, uh, yep.
I, I'm sorry, I actually did talk to the guy who owns that building and he is retail. He's not a contractor.
Yeah, that's what I would have thought. And even when new granite company came in, the interpretation sheet said retail because he's selling the granite slabs. So, I mean, I guess it's late tonight and, and I still do want to go forward with them, but it's ten of ten. So I don't know if anyone's okay with talking about it next time. And plus, maybe, I don't know if the ZBA is going to be here next time, or I know that was discussed, or if we're just going to meet again.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Um, so I totally understand how you have concerns about like the nineteen seventies and eighties type of contractors yards that might still exist along Main Street where um, you're thinking about. So my concern is, I feel like contractors yard is so general that maybe we need to do a little modernization. Because I'm thinking more of, you're looking at the trades in general. So it, its scope is so broad that I almost think like I go back to when we talked as a board about, you know, the changes that are evolving in industrial. Do you want to have various levels of industrial? Right? So you have levels that are not, you know, like, you know, not as intrusive to the neighborhood, so they go near the neighborhoods and then, you know, you tear it that way. Is it that what you want to look like? I, I think when you modernize contractors yard or a contractor shop is, I get it, like something that's very intrusive to a neighborhood, you wouldn't want in like a business district. But then a small contractor shop like a little, like we talked about, maybe, you know, a granite place or something that does, um, you were talking about like a cabinetry place that is, Bob is the person who has to make the definitions, has, has to make the determinations on these definitions. If they're all lumped together with this one word called contractor, which to me in modern terms means could also mean a contractor could be anything, right? And then you invite yard to mean, means exterior and shop to me means interior. I think the board needs to work on maybe making a determination on those definitions. And then, do you want to level it? And then where do you want it?
Yeah.
Right. I, I agree with you that, I mean, you have some concerns, which seem valid. I just think um, we need to break it down so we don't um, have these unintended consequences for some small business owners in town.
Right. I agree. And I think with the email I sent out on contractors yard, it is the definition I was trying to work on and we could all work on it together. And maybe it ends up two definitions come out of it. Because it is vague and we, like you said, it can be a service person or it could be a shopper. But I think maybe if everybody looks at that and has ideas, we can discuss it next time. I, I mean, it's ten of ten.
Okay, so that, I think, is that worth talking about again? Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I agree. All right. And non-conforming?
I think the same thing. I'd like to talk about it next time. I mean, we just took the non-conforming class. So I had some ideas and I might even have a question for town council. But, you know, I think it's a lot to get into right now at ten to ten.
Okay, so um, in terms of the, the ZBA, I did, I, I did watch their last meeting and I see that, um, I think it was Paul had asked about possibly having a joint meeting and it seemed that the, the ZBA liked that idea as well. So would we want to, I think we need the next meeting, we have STARS at um, the, a hearing with STARS to start. I don't know how much that might actually be continued. But I think we need time to get in a better spot before we sit down with other groups. So what if we use the next meeting to kind of hash through these, hammer through these final things? And then the second meeting in January, uh, maybe that first hour of our hearing, I'm sorry, of our meeting, invite the ZBA to join us? Does that sound like something that would make sense to do?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, Kathy, I didn't hear them mention a date. Maybe they did say a date. I didn't catch it if they did, but um, is that something that you could just mentioned? Or they don't meet again until after that meeting? So I don't know the best way to coordinate.
Yeah, um, I, I mean, I can, um, uh, I'm just looking at the, the calendar. Um, so you're looking at the nineteenth, um, asking them if they want to meet with you on the nineteenth. Um, so I mean, I can, I can certainly, you know, just send an email to the ZBA tomorrow, just so that we can, I mean, I can't believe, you know, I'm already scheduling into like, you know, March and April. But, um,
What if we did?
But I mean, just to get it on their calendars, you know?
Would we want to do like a, Michelle, is six o'clock too early for you? If we did six to seven?
No, I'm good.
And then, so if we did six to seven and then kick into our regular meeting at seven. So if that, if they can join us for that first hour.
Kathy. One of the things that Fred, I, I'm sorry, Amy, that, that Fred was just suggesting, they were in the same room. So this, this is the, 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 we're holding offline, sorry. But one of the things that Fred just suggested, although I'm not sure what the hearing schedule is for the twenty-sixth, is that, you know, we do a joint meeting on the twenty-sixth if the ZBA didn't have a lot on their plate that night. And, um, and I think Bob, I think we've gotten two or three hearings so, I mean, applications so far.
Um, I'm, I'm pretty sure you're going to see at least three, potentially four.
Yeah, okay.
And those are typically appeals.
Yeah, so that probably doesn't work then. We're, we're kind of just thinking out loud here. So, I mean, if we, yeah, if we did that, you know, I can, I'd throw that out that on the nineteenth, um, you know, from, I think it's going to take longer than six to seven, but um, that we start at six and put the ZBA on, you know, the zoning discussion with the ZBA on first.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I think we're looking for, maybe, maybe if they could receive a copy of what we have so far so that they have some thoughts. I mean, I would just be looking for some initial feedback or questions or things like that. If they could do that and if they have time in advance of that, and then we could kind of, it looks like there are ones that primarily impact them. So maybe we focus on those. And of course, any feedback for any of them really is welcome, but just the, the ones that impact them specifically, we'd obviously want to cover.
Mm-hmm. Yep, I'll, I'll do that tomorrow. I'll send that out tomorrow.
Well, what I was thinking, I was thinking along the same lines that we should send out the information in advance, but we should wait on the bylaw information until after the fifth because we're still going to talk about.
Good point, good point.
Well, I mean, I can at least, you know, notify them and, and, you know, let them know of the date. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's late. I want to wrap us up. Um, do we need any, anything else covered in this meeting that we cannot wait? A and Rs, bonds?
I, no, I don't, I didn't have anything else, um, for you.
We never went back to the ten, twenty minutes, but I think it's too late for that.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Kathy does read about, I think. She sounds disappointed. Um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Amy? Oh, yeah, Amy?
Hi, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays.
Michelle?
Oh, hi, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Yeah.
Hi.
And Carrie's an hi. Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everyone.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Bye.